What was that? Town manager Paige, ready to begin? Town manager Paige, ready to begin? Okay. Good evening. I call the September 27th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. On September 30th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Councilmember Rabadi will be participating remotely via Microsoft Teams this evening. Master Officer Hogan has served as police officer for three years and is currently a patrol officer assigned to Uniform Patrol. She will be our sergeant in arms this evening. Thank you for being with us tonight. The indication at this time will be delivered by Councilmember Rabadi.
Councilmember Rabadi, are you able to hear us from the table?
I apologize, I was on mute. Sorry about that. Hey. If you must go into darkness, be light. If you must go into the storm, be serenity. If you must go to war, be peace. In all ways and in all faiths, be your highest self. Do not conform to your environment, but shape it for the better and elevate it for all.
Thank you very much. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to share anything at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to add a presentation to recognize our Stormwater Division, who recently received an award at the annual APWA Conference. And this item can follow Item 9A, if that's the will of the council. Also, in order to meet the needs of a group who would like to address us during public address, if we could move the public address from its present location later in the agenda and move it right after consent agenda between Items 6 and 7, that would be appreciated if you can make the motion, including those two changes.
I'll make the motion with both of those changes?
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that carries 5-0. At this time, there are...
I do have one point of order.
Yes, please.
I will need to leave the meeting sometime before 7:30 PM. I don't know exactly when that will be, but I will check both you and Town Manager Paige.
Okay, and we'll announce it at that time. Thank you so much for letting us know. I appreciate that. Okay. Moving to Item 6, there are five items on this evening's consent agenda. Approval of two sets of August Town Council meeting minutes, resolutions approving the award of FY 2023 paving contract, paving project contract, adopt, adoption of the Morrisville Geographic District Maps realignment, and a Dominion Energy Franchise Agreement renewal. Would any council member like to pull any of those items for discussion before we adopt? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I mean approve it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that also carries unanimously 5-0. There's nothing pulled from the consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Smith for any public comments received via email or anyone who signed up.
Yes, sir. There was one public comment received via email from Conrad Mock of Chapel Hill voicing opposition to the Petland Store coming to Morrisville. And we do have one individual signed up for public comment, Ms. Lindy Brown.
Okay. If you could state your name, address, and your role for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Lindy Brown, former Wake County Commissioner and second Vice President of Sigma Zeta Chapter of Zeta Faberita Sorority Incorporated. As most of you know, Sigma Zeta Chapter is a nonpartisan and a nonprofit organization that has been in the town of Morrisville since 2004. During that time, we have reached out to elected officials like yourself and community activists in the town of Morrisville to make sure that we are a part and participating in your activities. Some of the activities that we have participated in the past have been your Halloween celebration. We've participated in your Fireman's Event. We've held former candidate elected officials' events, and we have participated with the Chamber of Commerce. And more recently, we were involved in your Juneteenth Celebration, which we thoroughly enjoyed and do plan to be involved this coming year. You understand, I'm just getting over a cold, so I do apologize for that fact. At this time, I would like to introduce our new president, Ms. Leah Selvi, and she will introduce other officers.
Good evening again. I'm looking around the room because I do recognize some faces. I am not that young, so I just want to let you all know that. That's my disclaimer for this evening. But yes, my name is Leah Selvi. I'm the incoming president for this year, and our new administration began in May, and this happens every other May. And so, we're really excited because we've been locked down with COVID for the past two and a half years. We're excited to be returning outside in Morrisville. So, we're at 922 North Church Street, right at Luther Green Center. That's where we meet every month. We share the space with the Cricket League that's out there, so we're really excited when we get to see them. So, again, you've heard Mrs. Lindy Brown, my sorority sister, mentioned that we've done great activities in the town of Morrisville over the years. We're looking forward to more activities that we are going to be doing with you all this year, so we're really, really excited about that. Anything you need, Mayor, just reach out. We'll make sure you have our information. We brought some brochures today. I would also like to introduce several other members that are here with me as well.
Just give them to the Town Clerk, would be fine. Thank you.
We have our corresponding secretary that's standing here to my right, Jessica Davis. And also, we have Olivia Moore, who is our third Vice President, because we do have an undergraduate chapter we sponsor, New Omicron, which is at Duke University. So, just want to let you know that. So, we're dynamic in age, but we also have some young ones that we're responsible for as well. So, we wanted to share that with you all. And at this time, if you all have any questions for us, we'll be glad to entertain them if there's anything.
Generally, this is just the one way you share your thoughts. It does look like there's some Duke blue happening over there.
Yes. Yes, just a little bit.
Thank you so much for coming and introducing yourselves. We look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Was that email with the full address and everything? Does it get read completely or just the summary that you gave?
Just a summary, sir, as it did include the address.
Okay. Was there anyone else here in the audience who didn't have a chance to sign up that would like to share their thoughts for three minutes tonight? Okay. Hearing none. At this time, I would like to recognize that Councilmember Skarren Johnson is joining the meeting.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. And once again, we already did the ethics statement. Is there anything that you'd like to share about tonight's agenda?
No conflicts of interest, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We just finished the consent agenda. We're moving on to administrative reports. There is one administrative report tonight, a quarterly capital projects update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions this evening? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the project.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Mark, how are you?
How are you?
I just have a couple of questions on the amenity expansion project and then a question on the Crabtree Nature Park. On the amenity expansion, it said, where is it? I was curious as to when we will be able to see the construction documents or the design?
That's a great question. We actually are programming to come back to council, actually at October 11th meeting, to give a full presentation on both the amenity expansion project and the Southern Lot project.
Okay. And then, in the project status, it said that the objective is to support an April 23 completion date. Is that for the South Lot as well?
So, right, by current contract, we are required to have the Southern Lot completed by April of 2023. That's right.
Okay. And then, in the design, and I'm saying this for the people at home because I think they'll be interested, and the people in the audience as well, the Southern Lot design will still consist of potentially a basketball court and beach volleyball courts.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then, the question I had with regards to the Crabtree Nature Park was on the status and the, you know, I understand you guys have been dealing with a lot of delays of having to remediate previous flood control that was done.
Yes.
It says CLH has proceeded with further construction document design of the park from September 21 onward. So, not to put you on the spot, but that was a year ago, so where are they with those construction documents?
So, we're still working through some permitting issues, so we haven't completed the design 100%. Once we get through the remaining issues, we'll be finishing up the design and moving towards the construction phase. I could, I don't have a lot more details than that off from memory, but I could bring back more information as required.
Yeah, I mean, does CLH have a projected milestone, like what the next milestone will be?
So, we're pretty deep into design. Once we get through those final permitting issues, then we'll be at 100%, so we're almost there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other things for our Town Engineer, Mark Spanioli? Seeing none? Thank you for, oh, did I recognize Councilmember Rabadi? Did I hear you? Okay. Perhaps not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item 9, Presentations. We have five presentations tonight. Introduction of Mary Fawcett, Interim Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director. Recognition of Stormwater Division APWA Award, we just added that. A 1021 Harris Mill Road Development Update, a National Community Survey Report Presentation, and a 2021-2023 Communications Strategic Plan Update. Brandon Zudma, Deputy Town Manager, will make the first presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My pleasure to be here tonight to introduce to you Mary Fawcett. Mary is our interim Parks and Recreation Director as of yesterday, so go easy on her. She's drinking, we've discussed a couple of times, the water hose, so she's taking a lot of information in, but has jumped right in. So, Mary has joined us. She was most recently with the City of Graham as their Downtown Development Director, but that came after about a 16-year career in Parks and Rec with the City of Burlington. So, she had started out as an aquatics specialist and went on to manage their facility, also has a vast amount of experience working in parks and programming and facilities, and she's also expanded into special events and community engagement. As we did some reference checks, all spoke very highly of her. I happen to know several of the people that she had worked with, and they all spoke very highly of her, and she has the endorsement of her own genie hooks from them attending a class in the past. So, Mary is married and has three school-aged children and currently resides in Graham, and we will have her here for at least the next six months as we do some assessment of the department and begin to work some things out, and then we'll be back to you in the future with an update on how that's going. And with that, I'll just offer Mary to make any comments you'd like to make.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor, council, greetings. I hope that I get to speak with all of you on a personal level, one-on-one, outside of the chambers at some point in time here in the near future. I did get to meet Mayor Protem on Saturday, so Brandon said I started yesterday, but actually the town welcomes me on Saturday with a festival, so what better way to start, right? So, the party continues, whether I'm drinking from the fire hydrant or not. I'm very honored to be here. I'm thrilled to be a part of the team, and I'm just excited for what's going to unfold. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome. We've heard great things already, so we're really looking forward to it. Would anyone else like to chime in?
Just welcome.
Welcome.
I appreciate it.
We look forward to speaking with you and seeing all the great things you're going to bring to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll do the Stormwater Division APWA Award. I'd like to recognize Ben Mills, Stormwater Engineering Manager, and Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer, to share its recent recognition. Look at the smile on his face.
So, good evening, Mayor, council members. We have an exciting moment here that we'd like to express to the council and to the community, and we want to start off by congratulating our Stormwater Division with the engineering department here at the town of Morrisville, their hard work and dedication to the development of the Town Center Core Stormwater Control Measure, which is out behind you all. They were the recipients of the Stormwater Project of the Year Award from the American Public Works Association Stormwater Conference in September. Their group, together with our consultant team with us in Ravenna, were the recipients of the award. We're super excited. This is a very prestigious award. It was at the annual conference. This project, as you know, is pretty amazing for the town. It's in preparation for the Town Center development itself, so we're very excited about that. So, Ben Mills and his team have been doing an outstanding job, and you know that it was completed last year, but we did, where we were, there's recipients of the award, and we're very excited and wanted to congratulate his team. So, thank you.
So, to be clear, this is a national award, the best stormwater device in the nation.
Here, we're here in North Carolina.
In North Carolina. Okay.
I think the nation.
We're allowed to say that, right?
Congratulations. You guys won an award for Northwest Park a few years ago.
Yes.
So, this is becoming a trend, not to put any pressure on you. Thank you all.
Can we give them a random of a bunch of such?
Yes, definitely.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Wonderful work. And Mark Spanioli, our Town Engineer, will also make the next presentation.
All right. Good evening again. I guess it's my day up at the beginning here. So, this evening, we have an update to the presentation we gave back in July for the Harris Mill property that we own, that currently we're developing Fire Station Number Three at. So, we wanted to go over a few things and address some of the questions and comments that came up, and have a couple of questions for the council as well. So, I wanted to start with a quick overview of where we left off in July. Our primary question at that time was whether or not we should allow the neighboring Dance Studio Development to propose a pond that would be shared or straddle both properties to provide a shared stormwater control measure for the benefit of both parcels. And a number of questions and comments came up during that presentation, some of which were the ones here, how many basketball courts could fit on the remaining parcel that we own at Harris Mill? Could the proposed pond that the Dance Studio was proposing be rotated to take up less space on our property? Could we share parking with the Dance Studio, their parking lot that's being proposed? Other comments, like we have very little available land, and we want to preserve as much as we can, came up. And what would it be like, or what would it take to retrofit the existing pond that currently straddles our property and the Fuji property, handle our development on the fire station? So, let's go through some of those things. So, just to reorient ourselves, as you know, the property is located just north of McCrimmon on Harris Mill Road. The property outlined in red is our parcel. The neighboring Dance Studio Development is outlined in green, and the existing pond that's on the property now is shown here, straddles our property and the Fuji Daisin property to the north. So, let's start with our analysis of the existing pond. We wanted to come back and provide further information related to the pond on the property. The existing pond, as I mentioned, straddles the both properties, and it serves, it serves six parcels, actually, the six parcels that are part of a Property Owners Association. So, we actually worked a little bit, we spent a little time with our consultants to get a good, detailed understanding, what would it take if we wanted to retrofit that pond to serve our property? So, the pond doesn't meet our current, the current nutrient reduction standards that are required by the state. So, the pond itself would require extensive upgrades and reconstruction. We would have to basically de-water the entire pond and rebuild the entire pond. That would encompass additional easements surrounding the pond from the two properties, additional maintenance agreements for long-term maintenance of the pond, as well as increased costs for maintenance from all the property owners to maintain on going forward. And ultimately, the added cost compared to what it's costing us to build a new pond would be an additional $300,000. So, all that all together, we felt there wasn't a good case for upgrading the pond because there were so many obstacles and costs associated with that upgrade. That's the first piece of information that was asked of us. So, next up is a Dance Studio Development Update. We wanted to give you an update on the Dance Studio Development. Back in July, the pond that we showed you that was proposed by the Dance Studio was basically completely on our property. We went back to them to discuss different options, and they came back with a rotated pond that would occupy approximately 0.35 acres of our parcel if we were to move forward. The prior, the previous proposal was occupying about 3/4 of an acre, 0.75 acres. You know, different things to consider, we would benefit from the pond if we, when we develop our remaining parcel of land, we could actually have a shared use with that pond. And, you know, to talk about parking a little bit, because I know that was one of the questions and concerns, we did talk with the Dance Studio owners. They would be amenable to discussing parking options, but we would also have to meet the UDO requirements for parking, so we would still have to have some kind of parking on our property if we do development. In addition to that, their parking that's there now that's proposed for their development would really, is really at capacity to serve their development. So, the only way we could access any of that parking would be the potential of some kind of accommodation during different hours of the day. When they weren't open, we could use the parking. But they are amenable because they do have some vacant portion of their land that would be considered Phase II, they're amenable to looking at the possibility of doing some shared parking under their Phase II development. So, just to go over the land use based on the adjusted pond, the total property size is 6.3 acres. The fire station development occupies about 2.7 acres. Your required tree buffer that surrounds the perimeter of the property occupies about 1.2 acres. The existing pond and drainage easement that was deeded with our property is highlighted in yellow. On the map itself is 0.7 acres. The shared pond, which is kind of the greenish square at the bottom, is about 0.35 acres on our property. And so, the remaining land area that was, that would be developable if all this was in place is about 1.35 acres. So, let's review our land development options. What can we build here? So, I've spent some time working with the planning department. This property is its own Neighborhood Activity Center is what the zoning district designation is here. I've put here a number of use examples. You can do office retail. You can do higher-density residential, no single-family here. You could build a public park, a recreation facility, a community center, a cultural facility. You could even have government services administration. You know, the town could actually build their offices there if they'd like. So, the zoning is relatively flexible there. For reference, looking at the shaded boxes and some of the information there, if you were to do like a sports type of thing, or let's say basketball, you could accommodate five basketball courts there, five full-court basketball courts. The gray rectangle designated would be like your parking area, and then the orange square would be like your shelter building if you had like a small recreational area there with parking and the basketball courts. I did put a note at the bottom. We haven't done any type of study or analysis to see what the highest and best use of the property is. I just wanted to make note of that as we talk about what we can build here. So, let's wrap up with some additional information. We have already executed an agreement with the Dance Studio property owners to have a shared cost agreement for the driveway and the water line. The Dance Studio pond does include capacity to allow a portion of our property development to drain towards it, so that does accommodate us. The land identified by that proposed pond that the Dance Studio is proposing is about 0.35 acres, like I mentioned, which we think has an approximate land value of $114,000 based on what we paid for the property. If we were to build our own SCM and did not move forward with the shared pond, we could do an SCM for about $50,000. It could be a sand filter, the other options that we have, it doesn't have to be a pond if we were to do our own SCM. And, you know, just based on the irregular shape of the property, you do have some limitations to the development opportunity there. And ultimately, we'd like to go into discussion. Of course, the question still stands, whether or not we should allow the Dance Studio to propose a shared pond for the benefit of both parcels. Either answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Town Engineer Spanioli? Thank you, Councilmember Skarren Johnson.
I could start if you want.
Sure. That'd be fine. Councilmember Skarren Johnson, please.
Thank you very much for that analysis and thoughtful discussion about the shared property or the shared stormwater control measure. It seems from the latest census that it could, we are going to be able to have a better use for that remaining parcel than before the original design really kind of cut it in the middle, and a lot of the land wasn't as usable as this latest design. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the latest, the latest design certainly increases our area. That portion of the property is kind of narrow, so it's not, it's developable, but you have some limitations. You have to be really creative with your design. But we did gain, we did gain some land there with the rotation of the pond if we were to move forward with that.
So, just to be clear, no single-family homes are allowed in that Neighborhood Activity Center, but town homes, are they considered an allowable use?
I want to say yes. I don't know if Michelle will give me a nod. Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
So, I'd just like to ask, if the pond as proposed right here, it would support five full-size basketball courts, impervious pavement?
Yeah, so the pond that we have proposed on the Fire Station parcel was designed to accommodate a portion of the remaining lot, and the pond that the Dance Studio is proposing has been designed to accommodate the rest of it.
Okay.
So, yes, I guess ultimately the answer is yes.
Okay. I'm generally in favor of partnering with people. Still having a little bit of heartburn about giving up any of our land for this at all. I do like the idea of the possibility of having more sports and recreation opportunities in that space. So, I think I'd be generally in favor if you guys need direction tonight. Looking for other people? Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I understand. So, the shared proposed pond, as you have... So the shared proposed pond, as you have it on the drawing now, there's a white line going through part of it, is that, or is the pond divided, where one side is for the Dance Studio and the side is us?
No, that white line is, so the ponds have multiple bays, you have a four bay, and so that's just the design of the pond. It's not, it's not divided because one portion is serving one versus the other.
Can we bring that slide up?
Yeah.
So that we're all looking the same thing, thank you.
So for, yeah, for, are we, for the design as it's showing now, what land would we be given up?
So I don't have a pointer, but if you can follow the red rectangular portion of our parcel that's at the bottom left-hand side of those parcels, it would be the pond occupies the darker shaded area, and then there is a tree buffer, which we would have had to have on the perimeter of our property anyway, just above the pond. So those are the, and that tree buffer would have been on the south side anyway. So it's just basically the area where the black, the darker shaded pond is occupying. Beforehand, the previous proposal, the pond occupied that entire rectangular area that was on the southern part of the lower portion. It actually even went a little further above the rectangular portion.
Do you have a slide readily available that shows the design when it was two separate ponds? Where the Dance, or is there one available where the Dance Studio has their pond? And where would we put our pond if we were not sharing it with the Dance Studio?
So if we were to do a pond, it might go right there. If we, if we weren't, we have other stormwater control measure options, we could do a sand filter that could be installed potentially underneath a parking lot, and that would discharge to the pipe that leads to the existing pond. We don't, we're not, independently, we're not, we're not married to a pond.
Okay. But the Dance Studio, they would have their pond, and it would just all be within their parcel?
Yes, and they may consider, what happened to them originally was they were proposing a different type of stormwater control measure on their property, and it became difficult for them from a cost perspective. And at the same time, we were coordinating with them, because we had a shared driveway, we were building, we're getting ready to build our property, so we were looking for alternatives for cost savings for the fill, for the cost of the shared driveway, et cetera. So that's how this kind of all started to morph into options, potential options.
All right. All right, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So Mark, you probably said this the last time, but refresh my memory. So this pond, and this joint pond that we're talking about at the very southern part of the property, that does not, creating that pond does not eliminate the need for the other pond that's up behind the new fire station, is that correct?
That's correct. It does not eliminate the need.
Okay, so, okay, I want to make sure I remembered that correctly. And then you just mentioned there are other options, and you don't have to have a pond, you could do, you know, some other option. Are the other options more expensive, less expensive? How, give me a feel for where we are when we, why are we choosing to go down the road of a pond then?
So they're generally more expensive, there's more structure involved. When you, when you look at some of the other ones, you have underground structural components. This is, you know, a pond is essentially, you dig a hole and you work around, you put a few minor structures in and some pipe work. Some of the other stormwater control measures are more, it's more expensive. You're basically sort of doing the same thing that a pond would do, but you'd be doing it underground with chambers and so forth. So there's a lot more expense incurred with some of the other options.
Okay. And is this a type of a pond that could be an amenity, where you can do a walk?
We think, we think it could. That, you know, when we were thinking about that it could be a park or a dog park or whatever, we thought, oh, that's a neat feature to have at the end or adjacent to the property, you could, you could enjoy it being near the pond. It's no different than the existing pond on the north end, and even the one that we're going to put around the fire station.
Well, so a couple of thoughts. I'm happier with this option than the last one, because there's clearly more land that we can now use. And I know we're not here to decide what, how to use the property right now, and you gave us a couple of examples, and of course, we are talking about sports courts, but, you know, that's to be determined. So at this point, we just need to decide if we want to continue down the road of working with our neighbor on a joint pond, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I am, I am okay with continuing to negotiate with our neighbor and on a joint pond.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Thanks, Mark. My question is more about the Dance Studio. You said, like, is there any room for expansion for them in the future?
Yes, so there's another, I think they're occupying about half of the parcel that they have, so there's another portion, I want to say roughly half an acre that's remaining, that they're leaving undeveloped for now.
They can approximately make 5,000 square feet or something off a building there.
I'm not sure what the development options are there for size of building, but probably, maybe something similar to what they're proposing now.
Okay. And then will that suffice the pond at that time too, or?
Yes, so the pond is being designed for, to accommodate all those future development.
Okay, and then the shared driveway, I'm having a hard time, why should we share with them? If we push the fire station a little up north, you know, we can have our own driveway. What is our advantage of having a shared driveway with them? Because initially, I thought like we are sharing it, that's the reason we are giving them the pond, because it's kind of give-and-take kind of a thing, right? So why do we have to share that with them?
So we see the shared driveway, the code requires cross-access, so there would have been some type of connection between the two parcels. And then as the, I think even prior to our fire station development and the Dance Studio development, the prior site plan approval for this whole property had a, had a single driveway. And as we started digging into it, and as they started digging into it, we have different requirements, the cross-access, the distance between driveways requirement that's in the UDO, and then the fact that we could share the cost of constructing the driveway seemed like it was a fair option to save money for both of us.
But my understanding is, I think when Michelle got this cross-access, we had exceptions for fire stations where, you know, no cross-access will be given for public works. Michelle, is that right? Because that's, I remember, that was one of the clauses like put in that we will, it doesn't need to be if it is to an, you know, a fire department or a police station or those kind of things, or?
You're correct, Council Garamella, Councilmember Garamella, there is a provision to waive cross-access in those types of situations. With this one, the Dance Studio really came first, and when that was going through the site plan review process, we didn't really know that we were looking at purchasing the fire station property. And so there's a master plan for this entire area that includes a shared driveway where it's shown on the plan. And as part of the site plan review, the Dance Studio was asked to follow that master plan and locate a shared driveway. So that was pretty much set before we came in behind looking to purchase the property. So we were trying to work within that framework.
Okay, but, but in theory, like, a cross-access is not really required with the fire station, that's what I'm.
There are waivers that can be requested for public safety and other reasons.
Okay. Thank you. So my question is more about, like, is this the trend that we are going to send for future, or how are we planning to go about? Because if we are neighboring with some other public office, or like, my worry is downtown, we will get into the same kind of scenarios. What is, what is our policy about it? You know, this is, I don't want this to be one-off, then people take this as an example and say, you did it here, why can't you do it for us? So how are you setting that standard here? To give an example, this was unique, that's the thing I'm trying to get here, so that we are fair to everyone coming in later.
I don't know if we have a specific policy related to that. I would say that this, this one did have some uniqueness with the, with the shared driveway and the fact that we still needed some stormwater control measures for our southern portion, not that we couldn't handle on our site. And at the time, it was part of a coordinated effort to, like I said, get, get fill from the, from the pond to serve, serve, fulfill that we needed on our property. So it was, it was a give-and-take when we got here. I don't know if this was specific policy or not related to this, but this one seemed unique enough to us to come forward with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Excuse me. I just want to confirm that with this pond, we could still have the basketball courts, but the other uses as well that could possibly, you know, you've listed uses like commercial, public park, school, cultural facility, community center, government services, those are on the table as well?
Yes, so the, the uses would not change with the construction of the shared pond, and you could certainly get the five basketball courts on there. We've already explored that to make sure that they could be accommodated.
I think a cultural facility, a community center, just what the council will think about would be something really, you know, that's something we've consistently heard about, that we don't have enough meeting space. And I like the idea of having, you know, a cultural facility, community center, just something I think we could think about. Thank you.
Looking to do a second round for anyone with questions or comments. First, Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember, I mean, yeah, Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Just follow up.
Yeah, I apologize. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi for her thoughts or questions.
No, that's okay, that was an honest question, am I allowed to make a comment?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand the situation. The points of uniqueness about this situation, which would not create a precedent that we don't want, the points of uniqueness are the fact that we're sharing a driveway, the fact that the site plan had already been reviewed before they, before we purchased the property and decided to put the fire station in there, and the fact that the, that we are saving money on this project versus redoing the pond or putting in a different type of stormwater, stormwater measure, is that correct?
That's a fair summary, Councilmember.
Okay, because I, because I would agree 100% with Councilmember Garamella, I don't want this to become a regular thing. If this is a unique situation, and we, you know, and we've outlined that and we understand it, and unless we get this exact situation, we're not going to do this again, then I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
So just to follow up my other comments about the fact that the pond potentially could be an amenity and walk-around, and the pond is on both of our properties, so do we need to, as part of this agreement, make sure we have the ability to use their property for a walkway around the pond?
We will have agreements in place for maintenance and other things that we'll need in order to have this shared pond.
But we will also have the ability to create a walkway around it if we need to.
So I don't know if we're physically going to have like a, like a trail around the pond. The pond will have its natural soded plateau area that surrounds the pond, it won't be a paved trail or anything like that. And then we can, I'm sure they would be amenable to making sure that we could access pedestrian access and so forth for the public, so I'll make a note of that.
Councilmember Fender?
Can you go back to slide three? You may have said this, and I just missed it, that purple area up there at the top that says new pond?
Yes.
If we do the shared pond down with the Dance Studio, do we still need this purple pond?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we would.
All right, thank you.
And sometimes stormwater control measures require a fence. Would either of these require a fence around them for safety or anything?
Heck with Ben. I'm not sure off the top of my head, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, because I know near some supermarkets and stuff, they all have.
Yeah, but I think, I'm not 100% sure about this location to be in. Okay, I'm sorry, there's Ben, yeah.
There's Ben.
I thought he said he was.
Okay, because that would influence the amenity look and things like that.
I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'm not positive that you have what you need to go forward. What, what was your take on where people were on this? Do we need to do a straw?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you would have to, yeah.
I think only two of us weighed in.
So if you want to create some wording that would meet your needs, like are we in favor of going forward, or what do you need to hear from us, and then we can give you a thumbs up or something?
I mean, I ultimately, I think we just want to find out if the councils are amenable to the town entering an agreement for a shared pond that overlaps both parcels for stormwater control measure purposes.
Could you advance it?
Advance the slide, your question is on the, on the last slide.
A little bit, so we can see the map.
Yep, I think that.
To propose, or are we approving? Are we saying to go forward, because that's stronger than a propose?
There's no specific vote in our agenda, I think it's just a direction.
Yes, we're looking for a direction.
Okay. So if you agree with this statement on the screen, and you're okay with the staff moving forward, go ahead and give a thumbs up at this time. Okay, I count six. Councilmember Abadi, would you like to weigh in verbally?
I would be a thumbs up, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, you have unanimous support to continue working with the group.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for a very good presentation and for adjusting, keeping it moving.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move on to item 9C. Will Glenn, our Communications and Outreach Director, will make the next two presentations.
Good evening. Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director, for the record. I am here to present the results of the National Community Survey that was just finalized in the last couple of weeks. As you may know, this is administered by the National Research Center in Poco, and they've done the last two community surveys for us. Those were 2017 and 2015, they being National Research Center, NRC, and they merged with Poco in 2019, thus the name change. Right, so why do we do a community survey? Basically, we want to capture a snapshot of the community at a specific time, so we're doing these if we can. COVID kind of pushed us back this time from the last survey. And we're monitoring trends and resident opinion, of course, over time as well, measuring government performance, that is statistically valid sample, that's important, that is valid statistically, and we'll go into that deeper in my presentation. Want to benchmark Morrisville service ratings against other communities that's in their database, and of course, inform budget, land use, and planning decisions going forward. All right, so the survey is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey, and we're basically measuring these 10 facets of community livability that's on the screen now, community design, utilities, safety, natural environment, parks and recreation, health and wellness, education, arts and culture, inclusivity and engagement, economy, and mobility. And there are 120 items, I'm sorry, 123 items in the survey, and it normally takes about 17 minutes to complete on average. All right, so this next slide, the money slide, so I'm going to take some time. All right, so this next slide, the money slide, so I'm going to take some time to make sure I got this right. I'm trying to get this thing done. All right, so first and foremost, every household in Morrisville was eligible to take the survey. So we determined there are 12,200 households in Morrisville. There are 17,600 addresses, but we know that there are certain ones that are within our boundaries. From that number, 2,800 randomly selected households received the mailings from May 27th, and they had seven weeks to take the survey. And there were three mailings they received. The first mailing was a postcard inviting the households to take the survey. The next mailing contained a cover letter with instructions, their survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid return envelope. Final mailing was a follow-up postcard, letting residents know that it was their last chance to respond. And the survey was available both English and Hindi. Out of that, we received a total of 214 completed surveys, providing a response rate of 8%. I would say, more importantly, the margin of error was plus or minus seven percentage points, and that aligns with the last two times we've done the survey. In addition to that, we also did a open participation survey, whereas we provided the survey link on our website for four weeks. And at that point, anybody in the town could basically take the survey. And we received 126 responses from that part of the survey. So the rest of my presentation going forward will be covering the 214 other randomly selected surveys at this point. All right, so the good part about doing the survey with Poco is they have a wide and extensive database that contains about 3,000 individual surveys in it, from 1,200 unique jurisdictions. The benchmark comparisons that we're going to use can only be from the last five years from these communities. And the bar graph there shows basically the geographic and population range of those communities that were involved. So only about 500 communities meet that criteria of the last five years. And I got for you there on the left-hand side, the 16 North Carolina communities that we were benchmarked against. All right, so now we're going to dig into the results. During the survey, we have two questions asked directly about those 10 facets that I mentioned before of community livability. The first one asks about the quality of each facet. And you can see the comparisons on the slide here. If you look at the left side there, you can see the 2017 number. Far right is the 2022 number. And under that, you'll see the higher, similar, similar, higher. That's the benchmark, the national comparison. The first question, so one of the questions was against quality. And the next question was about the importance of those 10 facets. And from that measurement, we actually figured out that community design, which was of low quality to our residents but of high importance, and we'll speak on this later in my presentation, but it's an area to work on, community design. All right, let's dig into some of the comparisons to national benchmarks here. So we're compared to those national benchmarks. Again, there's 500 communities. 29 of our ratings of the 123 items, 29 of them received more positive ratings than the national benchmarks. Those items, 93 received similar ratings. So basically, the bulk of the survey received similar ratings to the national benchmark. And we had one rating that received less positive rating than the national benchmark, and that was Morrisville's a place to visit. Next two slides basically just outline for you those 29 items that received a higher rating. I won't mention them all, but you can see them there. Morrisville's a place to work, I would agree there. Shopping opportunities, cleanliness, water resources and such. Next slide is just the rest of those, and I included, again, that one that was less positive rating. But we also compare our ratings to our last survey that was done in 2017. And when compared to those, 24 ratings received were significantly higher than the previous survey. And once again, the bulk of those were similar to our last survey. We had 80 items that were similar. And then we had 10 items that were less positive this time than in 2017. Our survey highlights, I just want to mention that the highlights, I'm going to outline four key findings for you. These were findings that internal staff and also Poco thought were important. There's a lot of data here, a lot of information. I'm going to just pull out four of those that we thought was important to share tonight. Of the noteworthy highlights, the first one I'll go over is high quality of life that residents experience in Morrisville. And they also praised the town's efforts toward inclusivity. All the items related to quality of life in Morrisville received positive marks from at least three quarters of respondents. It's similar to communities across the nation. So about nine in 10 participants gave positive ratings to Morrisville's a place to live, as well as overall quality of life in the town. And a similar proportion would recommend living in Morrisville to someone who asked. Also notable, residents gave high praise to inclusivity in Morrisville. I know this is important to our town administration staff and also our town council. About eight in 10 gave excellent or good ratings to making residents feel welcome, attracting people of diverse backgrounds, and valuing and respecting residents of diverse backgrounds. The rating for openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds was also higher than the national average. All right, so key finding number two deals with the economy, which is strong in Morrisville, though cost of living was found to be a concern for residents. Though, as I mentioned, the economy was a bright spot, with a number of items listed here on this slide that were higher than the national benchmark. I won't mention them all, of course. Again, there's Morrisville's a place to work, shopping opportunities, and employment opportunities, to name a few. However, like many others across the nation, Morrisville residents are apprehensive of the economic outlook and show concern with the general cost of living. You can see on the chart there, the decline from our last survey in the percent excellent or good when you discuss the cost of living in Morrisville. And also, then the economic impact of family income in the next six months, that decline also from 2017. Now, while these declined and decreased, they're both similar to national benchmarks in those areas. Our key finding, number three, community design may be an area of opportunity for the town of Morrisville. This slide kind of outlines the definition of community design, again, which could be an area of opportunity. Community design deals with things like the design of neighborhoods, the preservation of historical or cultural character, variety of housing options. And five of 10 gave positive marks to preservation of the historical or cultural character of the community, well-planned residential and commercial growth, as well as well-designed neighborhoods. Community design quality, first importance, again. When asked what the town should focus on in the next two years, about nine in 10 identified the overall design of residential and commercial areas as a priority. This was higher than other communities across the nation. Residents also gave positive ratings to the overall quality of design of residential and commercial areas, so indicating that this could be a potential area for focus. I think we could also discern that our town center could be an area that could boost this in our next survey. So in summary, community design, these mixed results. A majority of people gave excellent or good ratings to the neighborhoods a place to live, the overall appearance of Morrisville, code enforcement, and public places where people wanted to spend time. Code enforcement is rated higher than the national benchmark, while others were similar to the national benchmark. Lastly, we'll look at utility infrastructure, which is viewed very positively by our residents. All items were rated positively in this section of utilities by about eight in 10 respondents or more, and many were higher than the national, sorry, benchmark. The quality of high-speed internet, drinking water, and stormwater were all much higher than the national benchmark in that area. I also want to mention here that some of these aspects are not, you know, we're facilitating these, some of these components. We do want to also let our community partners know about the positive results that we glean from this item. All right, so conclusions. I want to reiterate again, these were some of the key findings that internal staff and Poco pulled out of the survey. Again, there's a lot of data there in the report, and I'm sure you had others that you wanted to speak on. So in conclusion, Morrisville residents continue to experience a high quality of life and praise its own efforts towards inclusivity. The economy is strong in Morrisville, though cost of living is a concern for residents. Community design may be an area of opportunity for Morrisville, and utility infrastructure is an asset to the town. So next steps. So we have all this good information and valuable data. How are we going to use it? So basically, of course, we're going to share this with our community via website, social media, our connection newsletter. Also going to review those that receive lower positive ratings, those areas. And we're going to examine deeply the areas that received lower ratings than in 2017. We're also going to share this with our internal departments, and we're going to leverage this data for future decisions and plans of those sort. All right, so that's all I had. Again, a lot of data there to take in, a lot of numbers. I will take questions. I'll make a deal with you. If I don't know, answer something that you asked me, I'll get it for you very soon. But I'll pause for your questions this time.
That is a good deal. Councilmember Scruggan Johnson.
Thank you for that comprehensive presentation. It's very important that we hear what our community likes, but also what they would like us to work more on in the future. I was curious, and you may or may not have this information, but there was a resounding 1% that had "poor" on multiple areas of the questionnaire. Do you know if that was a single respondent or several respondents that comprised that 1%? I saw it again and again.
Are you saying...
There seemed to be either a single individual or several individuals that wrote "poor" on a lot of the different questions you presented this evening.
I would assume it was more than one individual, but I can get that for you.
Okay, that would be important. And also, if it was the same individual or individuals that wrote "poor" across the whole survey, because that would help us understand a little bit more about the validity of that response. A lot of this was confirming some of my assumptions that I gathered during campaign season and other outreach efforts. So I appreciate this coming forward at this time. I wanted to emphasize that I too am very concerned about the cost of living in Morrisville in the region. We seem to be going through a transformation with the growth, and it's impacting Morrisville and surrounding communities. Is there a way to look at North Carolina, not just the national average as presented tonight, so that we could understand a little bit more about how Morrisville fits in the state?
Yeah, so we had those 16 communities in North Carolina.
Right.
And we were in line with them. Are you asking a more broad range within the state?
Yeah, just so that, I like the national comparisons, and I know that you aggregated so that we could look at how Morrisville was bearing, but I was just hoping maybe we could see Morrisville, the state, and national, for not everything, but maybe the areas that we have more to work on, such as the cost of living, the housing, and the community design. That's all I have. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
I'm curious about this slide, the comparison to 2017. It says 10 received less positive ratings. Does that mean 2022 results, there were 10 areas that were less positive than 2017 results?
Yes, definitely.
So do you know what those 10 areas were?
Yes. They were, not surprised, cost of living was one of those. Would the economy have an impact on your family income in the next six months? That's one of the questions. Availability of affordable quality food, availability of affordable quality housing, overall appearance, variety of housing options, will you remain in Morrisville for the next five years? The overall design or layout of the residential and commercial areas, that's that community design component. Availability of affordable quality childcare and preschool, and openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds.
So that last one, even though we rated higher than the benchmark, it was less positive than what we had in 2017.
Exactly, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments or questions about this? Councilmember Rowell?
Yeah, I just find it interesting that, you know, cost of living continues to be a concern across the country and around the state, especially post-pandemic and as housing prices continue to rise. So I think, Will, this has been very helpful for us to get that feedback, because I think, you know, it couples well with the affordable housing issues. I know we've got a consultant that we're working with, but just, you know, what can come back to the council that, you know, we can be in a position where we can make decisions and approve developments that address the concern of cost of living from a housing perspective? And so I just want to throw it out there for the public to listen to and weigh in on, because we've approved, you know, in the past, multifamily, but still, the cost isn't, you know, what it needs to be. And perhaps the type of living that we provide, there could be, you know, affordable housing options just beyond multifamily. So I'm hoping that whoever we work with, from a consultant perspective, can give us a range of options, or whether there's opportunities to collaborate with the county or other organizations like Habitat for Humanity. I know they've reached out to some of us, but just want to throw that out there. I mean, if you have ideas, please send them to the council and the town, so we can address...
Councilmember Rabadi, please. She's on mute, or...
I couldn't get off mute. Sorry about that. So I just wanted to say that we did go down in some areas. I think that the areas in which we, our results were not as positive as in 2017, I think, are pretty much entirely predictable in terms of the state of the country, what's going on in the world. I think that, you know, I think that we're seeing Morrisville as a microcosm of concerns that are, I think, epidemic across the country. You know, how, I hope that how we respond to them as a council is going to lessen those anxieties and those fears that people have. You know, I think that a lot of that rests with us when we're talking about the budget, when we're talking about, you know, where we're going to spend money, when we're talking about, you know, about amenities versus tax rate. You know, I think that we should be keeping this clearly in mind, because it doesn't, you know, we're not necessarily, as a council, represented... representative of the broader Morrisville where, you know, where these concerns exist. And I just think it's really important to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend Johnson?
So I agree with Councilmember Rabati. I think, you know, the whole nation is in a different place right now, and clearly, Morrisville is in a different place right now. And so we do need to keep this all in mind. I would ask that maybe, we don't need this presentation again at retreat, but somehow we need to weave this into retreat topics and the other issues that we'll talk about at retreat. And we need to remember this information as we move forward and make decisions on everything we do. So that's just a comment, but, Will, I just wanted to clarify. The results that we have, and I may have misunderstood.
Yeah.
The results that we have in front of us and the survey results that you sent us, and we've seen all of these questions and all the data behind it.
Yes.
Is that the results of the 214 that mailed back and not the 126?
So my presentation was a 214. In the report, you'll have both included in that.
Okay, thank you, okay, okay, which is not too, I don't, now I need to think about that maybe before I say my, the next thing I'm going to say. But I don't think that they're too different when you combine the two of them.
Nothing too extraordinary within them.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that we've got all the data for everyone that responded. So, okay, good, thank you. And then, was there not an opportunity for open-ended comments at the end of the survey anywhere?
There was, we included some of those in the survey as well, and those are in your report.
Are they in the report? Okay, then I need to go, I did not see them, so, and I actually was looking for them, so, okay.
I'm sorry, open-ended questions are in there. There's a couple of questions that are not multi-choice, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
They're not open-ended comments, but there's open-ended questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, 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 all right, that's fine, that's fine. And then, the only last, I think it's appropriate to make the comment in light of the fact that we just talked about stormwater and the award that they won tonight. I'm not surprised that our stormwater, because you singled that out when you talked about stormwater. I'm not surprised that stormwater, the ratings for our stormwater, their marks are high. Our stormwater department does a fabulous job connecting with the community and educating the community. And I think this community knows what stormwater is, whereas other communities may not. So that's kudos to the work that they do as well, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, don't see anything else, just thank you for the report. I know there's a lot of hard work, especially the analysis. And this, I hope, is just the beginning of discussions with our residents and our stakeholders, that these should create opportunities to talk about what we're doing well, how we can do that even better, and wherever we have some challenges, how we can address those. So ideas in both directions is going to be really great. I look forward to that over the next few months.
Definitely.
Okay, great. You have the next presentation also, sir?
Yes. So the next one is mine as well. This one is an update on the communication strategic plan. Just wanted to highlight some of the things that we are doing. Our plan was established in March of 2021, and it goes to work of our communications department. So within this document includes goals and priorities, challenges, opportunities, and future needs. So just wanted to give you some updates and also allow you time to provide feedback as we're in the midst of preparing for our next update of the communications plan as well. All right, so this first slide just kind of outlines our communications vehicles. This is basically our toolkit, I mean, the tools we use to get the job done. It's kind of like, you know, in the older days, when doctors visited your houses, they came with a bag and they had things inside, you know, maybe a stethoscope or things for your blood pressure. This is our toolkit, and you all are familiar with them very much so. Our newsletter, of course, that goes out quarterly. It's important because it reaches those folks who aren't really on our digital platforms. So we want to continue to keep them informed as well. And I guess this is the only thing that really goes to each household in Morrisville, because we can't be for sure, and definitely there aren't on the digital platforms. And of course, our website, which is the official hub for town information. While we have various platforms and mediums, the website is really the official hub where information is housed. On e-notifications, of course, our digital newsletter goes out each Friday. I won't go through all of these, but you know what they are. I do want to mention, though, the Team Morrisville One-on-One, which is very important for educating our youth. We'll do our next round beginning next week, four weeks consecutively for Wednesdays. And I'll mention also, Mayor Pretend, that stormwater is going to be covered heavily in that, because we have a whole entire class with Tony Victor doing our Team Morrisville One-on-One. But I won't go through each of these, I'll point them out as I go through my presentation. But again, those are basically the communication vehicles we're using to get our word out to our residents daily. Our goals and priorities, so there are five goals and priorities that I'll go through. Each of them has initiatives of their own. I'll go briefly over some projects we've done, achievements in each, and we'll discuss some challenges and opportunities toward the end, as I mentioned. All right, our first goal is enhance communication with Morrisville residents about town issues, projects, and services. Some of the priorities in this goal in the document are use digital platforms and newsletter introduce town and Morrisville staff to residents. Profile staff and departments using videos, social media profiles, and newsletter features. Promote the town's new emerging topics that require heavy communications focus, and proactively deliver timely information about projects, initiative, and facilities. For this goal, we actually specifically called out the MAFC, Marshall Carpenter Road Improvements Project, the Bond Referendum, Smart Shuttle, and the Senior Centers Initiative for this item. I'll mention first our Marshall Carpenter Road work that we're doing around communicating with our residents. I'm guessing most of you are probably getting the texts and the calls and the emails on Monday mornings. So our goal there was mainly just to be proactive from the beginning. We wanted to also let our residents know in advance whenever there's a change in traffic pattern or something drastic was happening with the project. We've also done various videos with Engineering Director with Mark as well. And the project is ongoing, of course, until it's completed. Our Bond Referendum outreach was done in the fall of 2021. I think most of you attended our Bond Pop-In Event that we had across the street here, Indian Creek Trailhead. We had two open houses, an HOA information session, not a, we had several HOA information sessions. We had booths at farmers markets, at the farmers market, and town events, and in multiple videos. Man, I really think that our involvement had an impact on the outcome of that vote. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that a lot of this was done with our administration staff as well in the fall of 2021. Very quickly, our Smart Shuttle, we collabed with them as well when that was being rolled out, but organizing a ribbon-cutting event, doing extensive marketing and advertising. We had an informational webpage that continues now. And we also did a couple of videos and also actually marketed the new note of the MAFC as well. And video creation, I guess, has been one of the main enhancements during the last two years. I do want to call out the critical videos that we were doing during the COVID pandemic where we were deeper involved. I know council, I think we did three videos with you all that were very informative and the town, they were very needed. We even came to some of your homes and stood outside and got those done. I think that played a very big role in informing our residents there. Also, employee profiles, we did videos, I think most recently with our new police chief, Chief Acosta. And of course, the National Community Survey is another avenue of gathering information about town services, projects, and those items. We also incorporated having a kind of a town tent at our events where items could be housed in one place. All right, our next goal was to create, renew, and/or enhance relationships with the business community, non-private organizations, educational partners, and cultural organizations. And some of the major things with this, I guess, one of the major things with businesses for my department is the outreach and engagement. We've been trying to figure out just what the community needs, the business community needs from us, and how they want to receive it. During COVID, a lot of that was basically, you know, grants or access to grants and access to money. We were able to hold a couple of business forums at that time to seek answers. We did surveys also, tried to figure this out. I'll mention that at this point, there's been some good collaboration with the budget and strategic management team. And we recently acquired a business database this spring that holds 1,700 total records of public, private, and nonprofits. We also created a business resource guide that contains valuable information. And I'll say that my position now for my community relationship liaison is vacant. When that person was here, they were actually out in the community at least two times a week, visiting businesses, getting short video clips, doing very short surveys, and just making that face-to-face interaction. Also want to mention that educational partners, we were able to do a school supply drive on MLK Day of Service, and we delivered those items to our Morrisville Elementary Schools. Also highlighted black business on social media during Black History Month. And we have involved businesses at our town events. And we were trying to get a firm number, we are around 30 to 35 businesses within the last year and a half attending our town events. I want to mention briefly our collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce as well. Most recently, we were involved, the Launch Morrisville Program. A lot of that is getting information on our platforms to all these artists and sharing what they're doing as well. All right, our next goal, to clearly establish communication and outreach department as the central point for incoming and outgoing information. I think most of you know, we said this before, Martha has as well, that the communications department is basically not even five years old as a department. So we've recently become a unit, a team of five, we're down one now. But a lot of what we've been doing the last two years is orienting internal staff about what a professional communications department does. And at the same time, we've been getting things inside our department up to that level as far as software or hardware, getting cameras, and those of that nature. I would say that we've made some progress there. Some other things that we've done internally would be town manager videos. Martha did a very important video, a welcome back of sorts when folks came back into the building when COVID lessened there. Once again, council videos that came about out of department, and just things you would expect as far as press events and news releases and groundbreakings and things of that nature. All right. A fourth goal was to continue enhancing digital communications. Some of the priorities here were improve the website performance and display, create social media campaigns that incite, engage the community, and utilize Everbridge platform dissemination of key messages. I would just start here, and I'll say that one of the main things that we're doing here, obviously, is the website enhancement project that's actually about to wrap up. It's kind of three things that we're doing there mainly. And our goal is to improve the search engine issues that we've notified, that we've been notified of there, and just improve the overall display and layout of the website. Things that we've done, reformatting the 20 most visited pages on the website, deleted over 300 unused documents that was actually causing clutter on the website, making it harder to find things on our website. And also, we're adding keywords to documents and pages, and of course, it's going to help you search and find things easier. We did a short survey with stakeholders on the front end of the website project. We're about at the point now we want to do one, a post-survey, to get feedback and to kind of gauge improvement on things that have been done there. Also want to point out our new social media coordinator, who started November 2021. This person has come in, hit the ground running, and our social media has improved in every way. And I'll mention that since November into September, we saw a 10% increase in followers across social media. And I'll speak on some of the challenges later, but one of those, I'll just mention now, was just being responsive to residents on social media. I mean, it's a 24/7/365 platform. And we've done a much better job of that now, that we have one person dedicated to getting that done for us at all times. Also want to mention that we consolidated our town projects page recently. Before, also the last month or so, we had town projects listed on seven different areas in the website, which made it hard to get those when you needed them. And we've actually worked with different folks across the town to get those in one place. We built some very educational and nice-looking story maps, too, that contain concise information about those projects. Right. Our last goal, continue enhancement of special events and recognitions. Some of the priorities here were develop a new town banner system, evaluate and revamp the town sponsorship program, expand multicultural marketing and recognitions, and create a merchandising component in tandem with signature events. And I'm sure you all have seen our nice-looking new town banner holders across town. I'll say that we have seven of the nine implemented now. We're still waiting on clearance from the schools for one of them and for NCDOT for one of them. So hopefully to get that done in the very near future. Special events, I know it's near and dear to your hearts. I'll say the main enhancement that you probably, well, that you know it is not probably, is our July 3 event. Prior to last year, that was basically a fireworks show at MCP. At the request of our manager last year, we were asked to kind of make that a coming-out-of-COVID event and move it to Town Hall. I think it was very successful. This year, we actually enhanced that by doing fireworks here on Town Hall. So that's probably now become our biggest event, whereas Spring Fest in the past was the biggest event. So we're now trying to do things so it's not the same experience when you come out for Spring Fest and then again for July 3. So we're trying to put those things in place. Otherwise, Morrisville and to the trail, the biggest difference there, I would say, is the involvement of our business community. As far as Morrisville, that involvement is done mostly, I'd say, prior to the event as far as businesses, marketing the actual event in their stores, and also providing things for free or for discount in their stores. Trick or treat is more so, we had, I believe, eight businesses on the trail last year passing out items and candy. And I think we've already gotten 10 secured for this year. We can't give it so many on the trail, we don't want to clog it up. But those are the major differences with those events. We continue to look for better ways to get things done as we plan our events. I'll mention our Veterans Day celebration, of course, is scheduled for November the 11th, and our MLK Day of Service that we'll be doing again in January. All right, I mentioned challenges briefly earlier. I'll start with one that is a challenge and an opportunity. And that's basically, we never struggle for content in Morrisville. I mean, it's basically, there's a lot going on. I mean, our town departments are doing a lot. It's just a matter of managing that and finding the right time and the right platform and medium to get it out. So that can be a challenge. It's a fun challenge, but it's also an opportunity to show our residents all this being done from town staff. And that's that second bullet they're basically going to speak it on, is the information overload or what it could become. The third bullet I mentioned earlier, basically monitoring social media and the need for response. And that was, this was documented, it's put together before we got a coordinator, basically. So she's really relieved some of that from us. Opportunities, I'd say, we have a really, really great staff. They're very skilled, always come to work every day ready to get things done. It's just my goal to make sure they have what they need to get their job done. And we're always trying to make sure we're getting professional development as well. And I'm glad that COVID has fallen back some, that we can get back out and get some training done. The last bullet here on opportunities is our Engage Morrisville platform, and I'll take a moment to speak on that. So we just ended our first year with Engage Morrisville platform. We actually did a six-month pilot program before we did the full year. So at this point, we're basically reviewing the platform. So at this point, we're basically reviewing the platform and seeing if it's providing the things that we expected when we got into the contract. We'll be providing updates to administration staff, and we'll offer a recommendation in the near future for future use. So Engage Morrisville was adopted basically as a another avenue of two-way communication outside of social media. So we're still evaluating that to see if we're going to go forward with that in what realm. Looking ahead, as we establish our next communications strategic plan, there are a few items that we're figuring to be in the mix. Of course, expanding our business outreach, still trying to connect with them where they are, get a clear understanding what they need from us and how they want to get that delivered. The next bullet, I would say, preparing for rebranding opportunities. It's about time we need some upgraded signage in different areas, including pole banners and holiday banners and historic banners of sort. But also, a challenge is always anticipating communications trends as coming down the line. It's kind of like IT, the field is always changing, something's always new and engaging. We want to make sure it works for us. And that again, that's why I like to get out to conferences and and programs and make sure I can see what other people are doing and see what's coming next. The last two, reviewing our staffing model, making sure that my staff is trained effectively and that we're providing the services that need to be provided at this time. And lastly, going to work to create a marketing video to kind of highlight some of the marketable town features. So I'll pause for whatever questions you may have or or thoughts as we go forward to plan our next communications strategic plan. Thank you.
Great. First, I'd like to acknowledge that council member abouty just a moment or two had to leave the meeting. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson to begin.
So I'm probably not going to cover as many topics as everybody else, but I'm going to cover a few that are near and dear to my heart. Communications is such a fundamental and key part of the town's voice. We are so excited to see, you know, you expanding in video and Engage Morrisville and growing your team and, you know, it it's a journey. And it's not something you can do in one year. It it's going to take a while to kind of get all that. So I wanted to maybe just give you some of my thoughts so that that I've heard and I personally experienced. The first thing is the Morrisville Carpenter Road Updates every Monday are phenomenal. I have not received as many phone calls and urgent messages from the residents as I have in previous projects because it's a reliable standard update, even if it's just continued work on the same stretch of road. People feel more comfortable understanding how to plan their days and their weeks, and that has been a huge success. And I hope that we are planning on continuing that when we have another major project, perhaps like the McCrimmon Flyover would be an example. We don't need it for every project, but when something takes almost a whole year, maybe the airport extension would be another example. So those kind of major interruptions in pretty much townwide were very helpful, and I'm looking forward to having that project complete in the near future. On that note, I know you mentioned opportunities, and I think that predictability is the secret of having some of the foundational messaging is what kind of cadence, reliable cadence, what what are you, what channels are you using on a regular basis? Events are something that we're, you know, the council loves a lot, but to have a calendar that's for the whole year, twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three, because now we know we we know we have Spring Fest, we know about the July third fireworks, we we know about our new international festival. So we could almost put out that in a very, you know, in a magnet or something like that so people would look forward to it and plan ahead and and kind of say, well, that weekend I'm in Morrisville celebrating X, Y, Z kind of thing. And that creates behavior and possibly the following that you're looking for. Who are the regular people that are supporting the communication journey and supporting the events as you kind of go through that? So that you still have your flexibility and adaptability, but I'm just looking for a little bit more of a reliability and a cadence underneath all of that. It doesn't have to be, it it's more understated than anything. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you is the Engage Morrisville. I've struggled a little bit myself trying to work with the Engage Morrisville platform. I know that you've had several guests and the staff has worked to worked with the community, but it would really be nice if we somehow could include video, like a webinar or some sort of interaction with the Morrisville community. I think videos seem to be a really popular way of communicating during COVID, and I think it remains to be a very positive way, even if it's someone interviewing somebody. But that visual, I think, would be another positive way of expanding the Engage Morrisville platform.
Yeah, and it goes into that review of the platform that we're doing.
Exactly, exactly. So that was what I had been hearing as well. That it's a, I like your strategy focusing on Morrisville. And I and I kind of, do we want to kind of bring it up a bit and kind of showcase that to the region? But then you might get a lot of people, it's that balance, it really is. So thank you very much for your work.
That's been a pushing post as I've been here. You want this for Morrisville or you want this for the Triangle?
Right, right, right. Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Ralph.
Thank you. Well, this was a very comprehensive presentation. I could spend probably thirty minutes just going through everything, so I'm just going to share with you one idea that I think is an opportunity. I think that, and it sort of coincides with our our chamber efforts as well, but, you know, we have so many big companies in the area. In Morrisville, about ten percent of all of the public companies are headquartered in Morrisville, from Lenovo to Cisco to Channel Advisor, many big companies, both in tech and life sciences. I think there's an opportunity to tell our story to these companies, whether it's through finding connections or, you know, that, you know, for example, let's take an example like cricket, right? So if we are able to get inside these companies and talk about cricket, then we could actually help cricket by getting more corporate sponsors to come in and put more money in and help us with that. Or it could be, you know, many of our, we have many residents in Morrisville that work at these companies, not only the big companies, but the smaller growing tech companies. And I think that it just coincides very well to our brand. So as we are selling our brand as living, connected, living well, we're also connected with these companies because I see this as a huge opportunity for your department and for the town. Because for the past, for many of the years I've been on the council, I think many of the companies, my, in my opinion, they're here in Morrisville, but they're not vested in Morrisville. So Morrisville is where they go to work. But what we want is we have an opportunity to have those company, even those employees that are coming in from other areas, to say, look, I can, I can, I can live in Morrisville. We want them to live. I can, I'm already working in Morrisville, but then I want to play in Morrisville. I want to stay after work and come watch the cricket. I want to go travel our greenways. So I just, I'm just sharing this as an idea. I think it's a great opportunity for us. And whatever we in the council can do, I just want to throw that out there. I'll send you an email with more ideas, but I I think that, and then that coincides well with the chamber efforts because as we sell that brand to these companies, then they're going to say, well, I want to be in, I want to be invested in in Morrisville. I want to join the chambers. So we're helping the chamber, we're helping the town, and getting this story told to kind of this, this, this ecosystem that we have here. So I think you're off to a good start, and, you know, whatever we can do to support these efforts, you know, let us know.
All right, we'll do, thank you. Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So thank you, Will. This was a really good presentation. Thank you for the update on all the work that you're doing and for reminding us that this department's only been in existence for five years. I kind of had forgotten that fact, so I appreciate that that reminder. And what I'm going to say now is not lost on you or or any of us here in the room, but I think it's important to say publicly and acknowledge the fact that the role of our communications department is changing in this world. We are not covered by any kind of media on a regular basis anymore. There's not a print media that follows us or reports on the work that we're doing. We don't have a TV station that's consistently following what we're doing and reporting to the public. So this communication is really important to our citizens to understand and know about the work that's happening here in the camp, in the town, and and the good and the bad. You know, if I'm going to say we need to highlight all the good things that are happening here, you know, we also need to be transparent and, you know, fess up when, and I'll make this up, if we're, if we're doing some work out there and we cause a major water main break, you know, acknowledge it, take responsibility for it. And we do some of that now. When there is major accidents, we try to use all of the tools that you have at the communications, in the communications department to to spread that message and get the word out. So I I just, that's important, and and you you have a lot on your plate. You just went through a lot that the department's doing, but that that piece should not be forgotten either. And and I agree with the the idea of the branding and the marketing of the town. If we're not doing it, nobody's doing it. So that that's critically important. I like the fact that you talked about the Engage Morrisville platform because, I'm going to be brutally honest, I I don't like that platform. I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw it out there. I've struggled with that. So I appreciate that you're looking at that and trying to improve that or maybe moving to something else. I, it was, for a while there, so one-way that I struggled with that. So, and I know that wasn't really the intent. It was, it was two-way, but it was kind of.
Well, you know what? As soon as you said that, there are, there are some places who are utilizing it as a one-way, which doesn't make complete sense to me. It's basically a website. But I mean, some places we found that are just using it as a one-way communication tool.
And and that may be just me, I struggle with that. It may be, and and that's the beauty of communications, we don't all communicate the same way, and I get that. You know, one one platform might not work for me, but it may work for others in the community. So, you know, and that and that's perfectly fine, but that you're trying to improve is really, I give you kudos for that. Thank you for the update about the website. You said it's nearing completion. Is there, is there like a date? Or I know you all don't hate giving dates, but are we talking like three months, six months, nine months?
Very soon, within a month.
Okay, I'll try to, I keep trying. And then lastly, on your slide, we talked about challenges and opportunities. I really like the communication protocols across the organization. I really appreciate that you have that as a bullet, as a challenge, because that that's a lift. So I appreciate that, and all you can do to work to that end, I think, is going to be very helpful in 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 all that you do, and I think our community will see that, too. So, so thank you.
Okay. I think it looks like I'll wrap this up, but the department is growing. Your robust communication and you're moving on to more platforms, meeting people where they are. I think this is really important. You talked about the responsiveness and making it a two-way communication. I think that's what people are looking for, and I know that's what we're looking for, exchange of ideas and moving forward with things. So I think you're definitely on the right track, and just keep it going. Let us know how we can help amplify your messaging because we are reaching out to slightly different people. And we, we'd love to see how you're going. You're doing great, keep it up. Okay, cool. At this time, we are scheduled for break, so we're going to go ahead and reconvene at eight oh one, so fifteen minutes, and then we'll come back with future meetings and opportunities. Town manager page, ready to reconvene? Yep, okay. Kind of bring us back into session. Public address, we addressed earlier in the meeting, so I'll move on to number eleven, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food, goods, and live music from small and local businesses from eight AM till twelve PM every Saturday. Tomorrow night, September twenty-eighth, at six thirty PM, representatives from Solarize the Triangle will host a virtual information session for homeowners to learn how they can take advantage of its group buying program to save on solar energy. Representatives will provide an overview of the group prop purchasing model, provide information about the benefits of solar energy and batteries, and explain how to enroll for a free assessment. See our town Twitter or Facebook feed for the link to register for the session. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources will be hosting a Movies in the Park at Morrisville Community Park, fifteen twenty Morrisville Parkway, on September thirtieth at eight PM. The movie will be English v English. The showing is free, and attendees are encouraged to bring their own chairs or blankets for the lawn, as well as dinner or snacks. Trader Joe's will be on site sampling snacks and beverages. As we all know, weather is a little bit iffy right now, so check on our social media before making the trip out if you're questioning that. On Tuesday, October fourth, Morrisville Police Department will be hosting National Night Out at the Healthy Food Hub from six PM until nine PM. Police and fire displays, food trucks, music, and inflatables will be there. We are seeking input in regarding our town center project. There's a number of opportunities to do that. There's two in-person sessions at the Healthy Food Hub, Tuesday, October fourth, from two till three PM, and then later that evening from six to seven PM, in conjunction with National Night Out, a virtual session will be held on Tuesday, October sixth, at six PM. Check out the renderings, project details, and more at bit.ly forward slash MSV Town Center. Your bulk item pickup on your regular trash recycle pickup day from Monday, October third through Friday, October seventh. And the Morrisville Fire Rescue Department announces the return of Fire Safety Day on Saturday, October eighth, from ten AM till two PM in the Target Parking Lot located at three thousand one Market Center Drive. This free event for the general public features games, activities, food, and door prizes, fun for the whole family. Other activities planned include a bicycle rodeo, coloring tables, photo opportunities, cornhole, and an inflatable bounce house, and a special appearance by Sparky the Fire Dog. Plan to be there, you don't want to miss this great event. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. Follow our social media and sign up for our weekly email, which comes out on Fridays, including lots of great info. At this time, we're at council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'd like to share a little bit about what happened to me this past weekend and kind of put it in the context that all of us can experience and and understand. On June twenty-third, nineteen seventy-two, civil rights legislation was passed called Title Nine. Title Nine is the most important law passed in Congress for women and girls since the women obtained the right to vote in nineteen twenty. What Title Nine is basically is students cannot be denied participation in any school program solely based on their sex, and this is any school receiving federal funds. So when I was growing up, and I was alive in nineteen seventy-two, I was rather young, and I always thought Title Nine meant girls have access to sports. And it never really meant a lot to me because I am not athletically inclined, and therefore it did not apply to me. When I was in school, I was more musically inclined, and I participated in band and concert band and marching band, and that was how I participated in school. When I went to college, I thought, I'll just go in the marching band, and I thought nothing of it, and I tried out, and I participated in the University of Michigan Marching Band. Well, this year, I received an email inviting all of the alumni back for what they call a blast for the past, and during homecoming weekend, you can participate on a limited basis, the first come, first served, in the alumni band for the marching band. And I said, that's pretty cool. But what really drew me in is that was the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Michigan Marching But what really drew me in is that was the 125th anniversary of the Michigan Marching Band, and it was the 50th anniversary of women being members of the Michigan Marching Band. And I was like, I think that's pretty cool. I'd like to participate in that. But what I learned through that weekend and previous communications is that it was not until Title IX was passed that women were able to join the Michigan Marching Band. They were, it was the men of Michigan in the band. So I actually had an opportunity to meet the women that were in the band in 1972, and what an honor it was, the fact that they had to ask, the fact that they didn't have bathrooms to accommodate women in the band hall, the fact that the uniforms weren't always accommodating. There was just many stories and things that I took for granted, and the thing about Title IX that I thought really did include me actually did. And that is the beauty of it, is that we now have that, you know, understanding that participation in programs is not just about sports. So I encourage everyone to participate in the areas and programs that they would like to participate. Try out, have courage, step up, speak up. It's very important, and where will we be in another 50 years? Hopefully, a lot more balanced and welcoming. Thank you.
That is a tough one to follow. I'm glad that you got a chance to participate in that. That sounds wonderful. Councilmember Fender will be after me. I'd just like to say I was so happy to see and speak with so many people at our inaugural international festival. Thank you so much to our staff for making it such a great event, and it wasn't just Parks and Rec. Lots of departments were out there all throughout the day, and we really appreciate it. Thank you to Doc NC team for their efforts to install more Little Lending libraries all around town. A shout-out to Anita Pung and Councilmember Donna Fender for working with our tireless Kyle Cooper to make this project a reality. I'm looking forward to the many events I mentioned above, and especially National Night Out and Fire Safety Day. Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, Mayor, you stole my one comment, but that's all right. I'm going to, and I want to thank Councilmember Skargans Johnson for sharing that experience. That's pretty powerful. And yes, I would like to thank Anita and the rest of the students with Doc NC for picking up the idea and running with it of installing the Little Free Libraries with their first one at Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. And mark your calendars, October 15th is where they're, when they're installing their second one, and we think it's going to be near Cedar Fork Elementary School.
Community Center, ideally.
Community Center. So looking forward to more Little Free Libraries around our town. That's all.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to wish everyone a happy, of the Jewish community, a happy Rosh Hashanah, which ends this evening. I also want to thank Town of Cary for hosting the Atlanta Tire Tennis Championships. It was a great event, having Pro Tennis in Cary again. I have two things I want to talk about real quickly. First of all, I want to thank the attendees. I want to thank Michael Langrath and his team from RDU for coming to Morrisville last week to talk about direct service to India and international flight recruitment. I also want to thank Senator Choudhury, Councilmember Garamella, who shared some valuable insight into the panel, Ryan Combs, the head of RTRP, Limo Kalapa on the EDPNC, and also the HSNC and NCAIA for sponsoring this event. Martha Page attended, along with Mayor Protam, and at the end of the day, it was a very informative meeting. I think that some of the takeaways that we'll be sharing with the community is in the short term, the airport thinks we can work with the airlines to shorten connecting times to India, which is something that came out. It's, you know, sometimes it takes two to three days to get over there because of the connections. In the medium term, working to add another European hub, which will provide additional service to India, and perhaps having a connection to the Middle East, which would create one leg, reduce the leg to India by one trip. And then in the long term, still evaluating a direct service flight, because the numbers, the data that we've been seeing of people interested traveling to India is more than the data that the RDU airport has from the airlines, about 75 per day. So I'll be working with Councilmember Garamella and the other leaders on working with the airport to put together a task force of business and community leaders. So we'll be doing that. And the second thing is, I was in Washington last week for work, and an old colleague of mine who works in the White House invited me to the Communities Day in Action, where I was able to listen to cabinet secretaries at the White House on the ARP funding, James Spurling, Mitch Landrew, who runs the infrastructure, a lot of leaders. It was a really great experience. And what I took away from it is, we should be very proud of Morrisville of how we're leveraging our ARP funding, specifically the smart cities. So there's about $1 billion coming in North Carolina for broadband, but I think it's very innovative how Morrisville's using that, not only for small business recovery and all the operations of the town, but even for our smart city program. So I think that's going to be a good model moving forward, and I'm hoping to get all of the information and send it to the council, and I've forwarded all of your information so that hopefully next time, we can go together for some of these visits. But it was a really exciting opportunity, and I think that there's tremendous opportunity for all of North Carolina to really leverage this funding to make a difference in their communities. And I think, I hope also, we can look at more opties and affordable housing. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I just have two comments. One, I'm going to ask everybody here, council and in this room and in the public, to hold Saturday, November 12th, for the Morrisville Veterans Day Walk. We have our Morrisville Veterans Memorial Foundation. There are 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is raising funds to help build a memorial, a veterans' memorial here in the town of Morrisville, and they are having a walk on Saturday, November 12th. So please hold the date and join them as soon as, I don't have information with me tonight, but as soon as that's available, I'll share it, and I know they will too with everyone, as to how to sign up for the walk. So Saturday, November 12th. I said that three times. And then the other thing, I just want to say, congratulations to our town manager, Martha Page, on her ninth anniversary with the town of Morrisville. She celebrated nine years last Friday was the official date, and so we thank her for all she has done for the town of Morrisville in the last nine years. So, and we had the opportunity, so the public knows, we had the opportunity to evaluate Martha recently, and we all shared comments with her and appreciate her greatly for what she does for our citizens and our business community.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, nothing is left, but I echo Sam Liz. Thanks, Martha, for leading the town in the right direction, and that means a lot to all of us on the council. And then a good attempt for the international festival. I think I'm looking forward, as it starts maturing, it will get more and more busy and more and more active. Thank you.
Great. At this time, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Page and staff for any comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like Michelle to come up and talk. We want to celebrate, again, a high school coming to Morrisville. There's lots of paperwork involved in that, and so that's going to be coming to you in October. I believe Michelle may have already emailed you this information as well, but she's going to go over it with you, answer any procedural questions. This is not the time to talk about where you want things and, you know, how many tennis courts. This is just the transaction resulting from the due diligence. That wasn't just meant for you. And then I'll have some others after Michelle's done.
Thank you. Ms. Deagle?
Thank you, Manager Page. Since the town council and our partners, Wake Tech and the Wake County Public School System, approved MOUs back in April related to the partnership, and again, that partnership relates to a new high school going in next to the Wake Tech property, the relocation of the fire station facility that we have planned, the lease of parkland to the town, and joint athletics base at Cedar Fork. We've been working in the background since then on a number of agreements, and we're getting ready to bring those forward to you in October. In total, there are seven items that we're going to be bringing to you. Five of those are agreements, and two of those kind of came out of the due diligence and discussions that we've been having. But with all of that making its way to you, making its way to the approval steps with our partners as well, we just wanted to update you so you were prepared and you knew what was coming. Again, five separate agreements related to the partnership. There is also going to be an amendment to the conditional rezoning for the Wake Tech property to add some more permitted uses, and a proposed amendment to the comprehensive transportation plan related to Markham Drive, which kind of runs through what is now envisioned to be parkland and a fire station site. So we're going to provide more information about all of those things to you at the October 11th meeting. You'll get a briefing on all of those items and, you know, some high-level detail of what's proposed in the various agreements. But again, just wanted to prepare you for that. Did, over the break, hand out a memo to all of you. The second page of that is the tentative approval schedule that we're working off of with our partners. We've been trying to coordinate meeting dates with them as well. So if you take a look at that, you could also see when the Wake County Board of Commissioners will be meeting, the Board of Education, and we're still finalizing dates for Wake Tech Community College meetings. But the first meeting is coming up on October 4th. Staff does plan to attend those meetings. Obviously, if council is interested in attending, you're welcome to do so as well, but we wanted to make sure that you had that information, too. That's just kind of an overview. I did have one other quick thing, if there aren't any questions.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
Last line, why does it say, like, explored joint baseball opportunities, Mills Park? You know, that's very far off, right?
It is. We could get into that more later. We had, early on, explored opportunities for baseball, which is not believed to be able to be accommodated on the site, and ultimately, it looked like there were better options available in the town of Cary.
Lots of balls in the air on this one, so thank you very much for bringing all this information forward. We look forward to seeing more in October. You can move on to the next item.
Yeah, if I just could very quickly put in a plug for the homework planning manager, Lawson, had sent all of you in preparation for our TOD visioning workshop on October 18th. We're actually going to be pulling together the packet for that meeting next week, and getting that feedback from you is going to help inform the consultant's presentation and allow it to be more focused. So if you have not completed that homework and you could do so by this Friday, that would be greatly appreciated.
And when's the last time you sent that out to us again?
I can resend it.
Okay.
So that everyone has it at the top of their email with the link.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Back to you, Town Manager Page.
I'll actually follow that, and I'll plug that Michael James is also looking for your small business input so that he can also prepare for that presentation in October as well. Did you resend it, Michael? Okay, great. 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 A little bit premature, but on our minds, I'm going to ask Brandon to talk about, I guess, what our first weather event planning is or will be.
Good evening again. Have you seen Hurricane Ian is going to impact us at some point? That's still sort of giving and taking a little bit, ebbing and flowing, if you will. As of this morning, it was, we might not get hit till Sunday, and now, looking at it tonight, it's probably still starting rain Friday, heaviest rain Saturday. So for us, you know, that's fortunate in the sense that it won't interrupt the sort of usual Monday through Friday business, but we do have a lot of activities going on, particularly over the weekend. There's a couple of Atukama events that are scheduled and some other things that we are working with Parks and Rec staff and others to evaluate options for them. So there may be, in some limited cases, some indoor options, but we're meeting with them. Our staff is meeting tomorrow afternoon with our public safety, first responders from public works, and others that have events going on, just to see where we're at and make sure that we have, you know, the template of a plan of how we'll respond if the impact is minimal, how we'll respond if it's significant. And we'll certainly keep you updated as we get closer to the weekend to let you know what we're doing. Hopefully, it's missed us, or it's, we didn't get it very bad and everything as well, but we'll keep you updated on what we're doing and happy to answer any questions now or as we get closer.
We thank you for the update.
All right. And last, I'd just like to remind council members about the Spark groundbreaking tomorrow. Please arrive 11:30 to 12:00. The program will begin at 12 o'clock. The mayor will bring comments on behalf of the town, but there is a town council shoveling that's also coordinated for all the council members to shovel the dirt as a part of the program, and lunch is served. So they know all of you will be in attendance, barring any changes to that. But big event for the town of Morrisville and for Spark.
So how much is the total duration entering?
I'm sorry?
What's the duration from 11:30?
They've scheduled it from 12:00 to 1:30. Part of that is lunch and mixing and mingling, if you're limited on time.
Do you know, is it going to be one hour? Do you know, or do you?
12:00 to 1:30.
Okay.
With, I think, lunch and mixing, mingling towards the end of that. The program starts at 12:00.
Okay.
Lots of great updates. So our next item is work sessions, and the council is comfortable going down to the table, actually.
Great.
So if we just take no break, just let's move on, move on down there.
Danielle, it's your first.
Bring what you need.
It's your first great experience.
For both work sessions, if you could.
Wow, thank you. Do we have extra microphones?
It might help to bring the blue things, too, although you might be able to do without them down there.
Bring our microphones there, then.
Can you bring your microphones?
I've got one, so.
Yeah, there's sort of a hole, so just sort of put them in the middle, and don't touch them. Yeah, let Eric. Yeah, great.
I haven't been to a work session with everyone down here.
I am not sitting in that.
Let me know when you're ready to go. I also have a presentation, but we probably don't need to look at it. We can also just refer to the sheets as well, too. All right, so I'll go ahead. Is everyone ready? I can just jump right in?
Yeah, if we wanted to set expectations for time, because we tend to talk a lot. I don't know. Yeah. Is it, are we allocating an hour?
30 minutes.
Yeah, I was hoping no more than 30 minutes. So hopefully, that worked. Hopefully, I've been able to summarize some things pretty good. So I'll go ahead and jump in. Last time we met, it was several weeks ago, to discuss the Conference Transportation Plan action items. There are 43, as a reminder. We had about 28 that were not fully completed, so we talked about the prioritization for those. I've taken the feedback that was given last time. I know there was a lot of different sort of topics, and I've kind of, you know, in the different themes that I heard was safety, EV sustainability, quick wins, traffic management, congestion management, as well as kind of a category of regular business. And so what I'm looking for tonight is to either concur or to make changes to the final list that I've put together. And what I'll point out, on the handout that I provided for everyone, it's also attachment one in the packet. one in the packet. In the narrative column, I did add notes based on feedback from the work session last time. I also went back and listened to the conversation as well, because there was so much detail in that. And then I added a new column called Updated Priority, and any changes are, so you can see any changes that I made between last time and this time. And so a couple of things to keep in mind is, when we talked last time, I was looking for three to five high priorities. So I did try to stick to the five top high priorities. We talked a little bit about staff time related to being able to do some of these and making sure we're not stretched too thin in a variety of areas to be able to focus and complete things. And so I did focus on keeping with five high priorities, and then in order to accommodate some other feedback that I heard as well, is to create a new category called Medium-High, and in doing that, elevating some of those other action items that there were either some interest in or a little, you know, a little bit more interest. And so what I would like to do is walk through the changes that were made or the items that were kept either in a certain priority or changed. And so if it is helpful, for the ones that can see the screen, I will have the high, you know, quick overviews up there, but it is all in a bunch more detail in this attachment. So the first item, and this is probably not the best one to necessarily start with, it is talking about the update to the CTP every five years and prioritizing doing, planning for that. There was a little bit of conversation about this sort of being a routine item and maybe not something to be put in the high priority status. One of the things that I did note in here is, and this is more of a staff recommendation that it remains a high priority, because even though it is sort of a periodic update, it is not something that's done annually, and we do want to spend a bit of time to make sure we are, you know, preparing for and investing the right amount of time into this project. So we did leave that as a high priority, one of the high priorities. The second item on the list is the adoption of a town policy regarding the funding of federments. In the discussion, there wasn't any specific feedback to take it off the high priority list. It seemed to kind of just sort of, you know, have some conversation about it, but not as strong one way or the other to remove that, and this is something that staff does feel is very important. It'll help provide us some direction on things that we are doing and when we deal with NC DOT. So that one did stay as a high priority. And then something else to note, and I've combined number five and number 13. Number five was previously on the list as a high priority, and number 13 was elevated from medium to high. I've combined these together to have more of an intersection focus. What I heard from town council is there's interest in implementing or doing some of the projects in the 2021 intersection study before we do any new studies to try and focus on those. We also have some items in the CTP as well. So I would just sort of wrap up number five and 13 together to focus on intersection improvements. And then number 15, which technically is the fourth item on the list, there was a lot of interest from town council regarding access management strategies for Morrisville Parkway. So I did elevate that from medium to high. And then the last item to round out the top five is evaluating and developing electric vehicle charting station policy and ordinance amendments, which was raised from medium to high. The other changes that I'll just go over do reflect the medium-high category. So I'm not sure if you want me to kind of go through those as well, if there wants to be any discussion specifically on the top five. It might be helpful if I just go ahead and go through those medium-high ones so that you kind of have a whole overview. Sound okay?
Good to hear.
All right. I'll roll through then on to the kind of the next category. This is a new category that was created based on interest that I heard. One thing to keep in mind with medium and high category, staff will focus mostly on is this kind of prioritization exercise helps us focus on where we should be, what projects we should be working on. And so those will be the first ones. As high priority items get completed, we'll be looking at medium-high priorities to address, but also keeping in mind, there's lots of discussion last time, too, about, you know, the quick wins. And so where there are opportunities, we will keep in mind everything that's on the list. Should there be a quick win that does appear somewhere? So kind of moving into the medium-high category, so on that page two, there's number four. This one is relating to developing a methodology to determine appropriate crossing enhancements for different projects and kind of standardizing that. Staff originally had this as a high priority, but there didn't seem to be a lot of interest generated in it, and there were other action items that raised to a higher level. So I did pull this down to medium-high. And then number 10 on the list was to evaluate unsignalized greenway trail crossings, so that was raised from medium to medium-high. Moving on to page three, there was advancement of the recommendation of the Active Kids Strategic Plan that was raised from medium to medium-high, in that there might be some opportunities for some items that we can address in that plan. The one following that is number 14, and that's to complete a study of transportation-related green infrastructure opportunities. A lot of interest in that one as well, so it was raised from medium to medium-high. And then the last one on the page three is a study of potential emergency access points throughout town. That one was moved from medium to medium-high. The last thing that I will address in this is on page four, and it's the first item, number three. This is to review a list of committed projects on an annual basis. There was a bit of discussion about this kind of being a routine item, and there didn't seem to be a lot of support as the high priority, so I did lower that to medium. And that does provide kind of a quick overview of the changes that were made since we last met, and taking into consideration some of your feedback, or say, all of your feedback in trying to find the best way to come up with a maximum of five items in the high priority status, and then elevating some of the other ones. So what I would be asking from you all tonight is either to concur with the changes that were made or to come to a consensus on what changes, or if you want to make any changes, come into a consensus on what those changes would be.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I like the changes, too, but I'm going to put in a plug for number 10. I think number 10 is critically important. It's on page two at the bottom, to evaluate all unsignalized greenway trail crossings to determine whether crossing enhancements, such as high-visibility crosswalks or signals, should be added, as well as type of locations for mid-block crosswalks. I just think that's critically important, but.
Especially with the new road configuration, like, you know, Morrisville Parkway has some things.
Yep, all over, all over town, this is an issue. It's all over.
But 13, 13 talks about that.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not going to rock the boat. I'm just saying, that one, I'm going to, I'm going to dog that one. Just know when I talk about it.
Yeah, again.
Well, I just have a question. Is this just pertaining to greenway trail crossings?
It is. This one in particular is if there are, you know, need enhancements at those unsignalized ones.
Okay. So is that still address your concern if it's only greenway crossings?
But it says mid-block crosswalks.
Oh, it does, I'm sorry. It doesn't, it could, oh, I see, yeah. There could be opportunities to evaluate, is that a solution in some places, to do a mid-block or to solve, to solve an issue?
Yeah, we talk about being a really walkable community, and in order to be a walkable community, it needs to be safe. So it's okay, I think, you know, I think you said something really important that I think I need to remember, we all need to remember, that just because there's a priority here doesn't mean we're not going to go after something when the opportunity presents itself, that if there's, you know, some reason, some funding mechanism, something that we can leverage, you're going to do it. And so I'm comfortable with that, but I just felt like I had to say that one about that one.
No, I appreciate it, and it's things, you know, if there are projects that are coming up or ongoing, there are things that we do look at with, let's say, new projects or, let's say, road projects, but there hasn't yet been a comprehensive evaluation, but definitely something we can keep in mind as we work on projects.
We're all pretty good with the top 10? Five high, five medium-high?
I love the incorporation of the comments and explanations. It's very good.
Yeah, I'm glad you did the column, the second column, because otherwise I was just going to have.
I had to help keep myself straight, too, so.
Really good presentation.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. That's easy.
Yes. Let's get onto Michelle. Baby, it's sitting on the table.
So Jeannie took the same exam.
You're going to do it in like half the time.
I take on the budget plan.
13 organized.
There you go. Shave off the clock.
So we said 30 minutes. Do we need to stop people?
Yeah, so. The next one is Town Council Calendar and Meeting Management FY 2023 Budget Feedback Discussion.
20 minutes.
20 minutes.
First we make you repertoire.
Yes.
She's sitting nice to me. That means I have to be here.
She's good.
She's good again.
Just to set the stage, we have an hour allocated for this, but there's some really meaty subjects that we might want to really leave for retreat. So let's just sort of keep that in mind as we go, but there's a number of things that we really should address.
If we start going too deep, then we'll.
So did we have one of those at our desk first?
Yes. The rolling.
Does she need one, or?
Does anybody need one of these?
She needs one of these.
I need both of them.
A rolling calendar.
Is that me?
Mm-hmm. How do I do?
That's the one that I can't read.
Do we have?
It's big, it's like.
She gave us this one to take a look at.
Did you make new hard copies of this? I did. Okay.
I will pass them out if anybody needs them.
And your rolling calendar should be at the two desks.
I will get them.
Yeah, I brought every new day.
Yeah, the rolling calendar's contextual.
Yeah, just to make sure everybody's seated. Does anybody need a copy, a fresh copy? If you could pass that down to Mr. Councilmember Garamella.
All right, so as the mayor mentioned at our last meeting, council asked to set aside an hour for this conversation. Candidly, I don't know that an hour is enough, and we're not asking you to make all your decisions tonight, but guidance will help us continue your discussion. We have provided to you the rolling calendar to really illustrate, we get really heavy again with work. All of the meetings are in excess of three hours with the stuff that we have on, and so there's no room for continued additional discussion of this topic unless you're willing to stay longer or do something different than this schedule. We've even already pushed things into the new year to keep those meetings from being excessively long, that weren't time-sensitive and urgent while keeping the other work going forward. So you should see all of that, and of course, the list of what is coming gets longer and longer and longer. So Jeannie and I have also, from the prompts we gave you last time, and we sent this out, when she sent this out, is there's just some meatier topics that best probably at a retreat or something else in the calendar year, but recognizing where we sort of started with this is budget feedback from you is important for us establishing the budget calendar. And for us, the budget calendar has to work backwards in order to know what we need to deliver to you when, and that involves your conversation with work sessions, et cetera. And then there's some of those other topics, but we're going to help you get there, I think, is what I'm trying to say. We may have to do some of it outside with email or maybe some additional surveys and homeworks as we get to developing a calendar, but your conversation today will help feed that for us. Any questions about any of that before we get started?
Yes. So Jeannie gave us a survey. I filled it out. Are those survey results here on the second page?
So the budget preview survey was, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So that was in last?
It's in this breaking item.
Oh, okay.
It is.
It was part of this breaking item.
And Jeannie has it to display?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because it says September 13th, I'm kind of getting thrown off, I think, so.
That's when it was originally presented.
Okay.
Okay, and I do have very high-level generic information that Councilmember Rebody provided to me. If that's relevant, I'll go ahead and tell you what she said to me. Tell me where, when to be, where, and when, and I'm there. Earlier meetings is harder for her. Other than that, she says she got elected to do this job, and she's going to do this job. So that was her feedback.
Well, that means that she gets all the action.
So Martha, you ready?
I am, thank you.
All right, thanks, Martha. It's really great to see you all at this table. I love the conversation that you guys have at this table and how you have that. So looking forward to that continuing with this item. So when last we met was on September 13th, gave you the synthesized information in a presentation, gave you all the background information for the budget process debrief, and we got basically to this point in our process, and we said, we need more time. That's what we heard you say. So in lieu of the time, we sort of punted it to tonight, and in the meanwhile, I thought, okay, let me see what I can do to help you guys think through this process. So I created this little template tool, and it's really, it's not a survey, it was really meant for your use. If you decided to use it, great. Hopefully, if you did, you brought your notes and what you jotted down to tonight's discussion, and it was hopefully to help you get closer to a quicker facilitated conversation. Again, we'll get through what we can tonight, and any feedback is good feedback that we can synthesize, and as Martha said, there's other strategies we could deploy that we could gain additional insight and clarity as we develop this. So what I would suggest for the one for my part is I want to request council to offload a couple items. So I want to make sure that we're all clear on what those are and we're in agreement. So I'm going to use this particular slide that you saw the last time. I'm going to ask that the budget balancing, or the balancing of the budget, number 02, which really are two parts. It's really what is your taxing propensity, your feel for taxing authority, and then the other one was mid-year allocations, really relates to your fund balance conversation. So what I want to really strategically do is ask you to move the fund balance discussion to when we actually present the fund balance for June 30, as of June 30 for fiscal year 2022. I want to move that discussion so you can hear what your fund balance is, and then we can go into some policy-related discussions and get some feedback that might impact that.
And yes, both the annual financial report results with the auditors and the fund balance conversation are on your schedule for November.
The other one, we really feel like is an excellent conversation at retreat. It's sort of, we've had it there before in the past. I think it's a great opportunity to talk about that at that point. The other one, I'm sorry.
Which one is for retreat?
2A. Yeah, 2A, which is your taxing philosophy as a council. The next one's going to be 04, and that's the alignment of department work plans and budget. I really think that focuses on how we present or communicate information to council and how we pull that together. I think we can have that conversation either between now and retreat or at retreat and be able to react effectively to provide councils some information. I think what the town manager and myself really need to focus on are 01 and 03, because we need to start planning now based on some of the feedback that we heard. So finding consensus among these two categories for the budget process would be important. categories for the budget process would be important to planning now to be prepared for what you want sooner rather than later. So that would be, what's the right mix of work sessions? That really goes into really how you do other work, not just budget, and feeds into that conversation. And then budget preview, what does that look like to council? I think that's very important because the common theme there was that you wanted it sooner rather than later in that process. And I want to provide you, or staff wants to provide you, with something that's usable to you. If it needs to change, I need to get some insight from you of how I can change that in a positive way that helps your conversation. So is that amenable? If we focus on O1 and O4, and then we'll move into the roundtable and the summer parking lot items as we go.
You said O1 and O3.
I think she meant O1 and O3. Oh, yeah, O1 and O3. Sorry. My bad. Thank you. Everybody good with that? All right. So I think my strategy for tonight is to simply use this tool and go through the items that you have consented to, one by one, and see how far we can get. Is that good? You're laughing.
I just know my group.
Well, staff is gonna try, Martha and myself are gonna try to keep you on point. If we think you're getting into the weeds, if we think we're hearing enough so that we can move forward, or if we think we can dive in through other tools or strategies, we will help you facilitate your conversation.
So I think another thing that I'd like to make sure that we are all speaking the same language is when we say budget preview, does that mean the same thing as?
I don't think it does.
Budget. I agree. I think we all may have a different perspective of what that means. So I think that's an important part of your conversation. Preview for Jeannie and I has been, we've gotten all this input feedback from everybody, including council. We've packaged it, and it's our final signal before we're preparing a budget message and loading things into a system. Council may have a different perspective of that. I think that the real understanding is, you know, how, where, and when council wants to be involved in what information goes in related to what we know, what the departments are asking for, you know, the needs, the wants, the big fish, those types of things, and just making sure we are all talking the same language. And as Jeannie mentioned, the earlier we get in that process, the less certain any information is.
Fair point.
So when you say budget preview, would that be before that document that you put out?
It is. The budget preview for Jeannie and I was the April presentation where, yes, we've pretty much balanced a budget. It's just our last, did we miss anything? What are your questions? We're locking it down at that point. And that may not be, that's your preview. That's how Jeannie and I are looking at that. You may see or want something different. And as we've told you before, we feel like we're taking your information in all the time. We set up a meeting for you to have that input and give us the things that you want and some of the brainstorming. We're trying to take all of that, but I'm not sure council feels like they've touched it and blessed it enough at the earlier stages. So that's what we're really trying to talk about here.
So last, this past year, did we have a work session prior to that April?
We did. You had two.
Okay.
Actually, I'd say you had four. You had department presentations. You had a presentation at the retreat. Then we did a what we're thinking about. And then you had your budget preview.
For me, I thought the way you did it this past year was good.
Thank you.
So I think it's important that we all use preview in the same way because I want the public to know whether this is, you know, the time to speak up about anything and everything versus this is, we've taken a lot of consideration and this is a near final, we're looking at final feedback because, you know, signaling the public when they can weigh in is just as important as signaling the council, I think.
And we had two budget portals.
Right.
At the development stage, and then after the budget was issued, it's a related and connected issue, but, and I would tell you, the overriding sense of the collective input is no one's happy with the budget portal engagement. And Jeannie's been here far longer than I and has tried that a multiple number of ways.
It's hard. I know it's hard.
And we get single-issue comments. No matter what we did, I think you might remember, I don't know how many hours Jeannie and I spent inviting the public in, and we got zero. And people are not engaging. And that doesn't mean we don't want to try different ways, but it's not for lack of effort. And there's also just, people only engage if it's of interest to them.
Or if there's an issue.
Yes.
Yes.
That's unfortunate and typical, and that's a broader engagement issue we have. It's not just about the budget. It's about almost anything we do. And we talked about some of that tonight. And then the input that we get, again, is usually, you know, single-issue items and requests and things like that.
And that's a struggle we all have.
Yeah. And that's not unique to Mar- that's right. That's not unique to Marsville.
We talk about that all the time when we go to the conference or when we're networking with other elected officials and we're all strategizing and trying to figure out how to engage the public more, better, I don't know. And you're right, it's not for lack of trying. I do remember those times when you two sat here, because I came a few times. And I was like, well, Kim, well, I'm going now. You can go home, too.
Yeah, we've gone out.
Yeah.
We've invited here. We've, you know, made the opportunity available in as many ways as we could possibly think of to do it. We're always open to trying something different.
We've done open houses.
Something that could be a little different is if we have a budget email year-round rather than just budget portals, because issues come up throughout the year, not just during budget time. So I love the fact that you had two budget portals. Journal public hearings, which are required by law, which I think are a little bit too late in the process for people to feel like that's really helpful, because that's after the recommended budget, which is pretty vague.
Well, that's when it's set by law.
Set by law. So maybe we can encourage some more public input in person before the public hearings that are required. But the idea, I know that Cary has a email that's budget@townocary.org or com, and that's all through the year. And if we could collect stuff throughout the year, even these single-issue people, those issues are important, and it's our job to aggregate all of them. It happens to be during the budget time that we actually do that. But I think some of that maybe gets lost or not remembered, that people are sending us stuff now or in the last couple of months that were important now. And if we're not able to address it through our budget at now, it's good to be reminded of them later. So that's just a thought, and there would be additional workload, obviously. Have to keep an eye on that.
Well, and I'm, I'm willing to try that. I think Cary doesn't do the same type of budgeting. I'm concerned that people will just be frustrated that they send them email in July and we're not talking about it till May. And just because they submit a comment doesn't mean it gets put in a budget. And that's a misnomer, that they think if they add it into a budget portal, then it gets put into the budget. I mean, we've had that experience even recently with people just expecting they come to talk to council and it's in. And that's not the way the process works. Council needs to get that input for sure to then consider if they're raising it to a priority for a budget. But the public is not using, and I don't know anything about Cary's, I don't even know if they have, the fact that they have it doesn't mean that people are participating into that, and we can find that out.
Certainly. We can reach out. Something that's on our radar is to look at other tools that are available to us to create more of that two-way approach in the budget portal or in like sessions. In the past, I will say, no matter what vehicle you put out there to collect input, it depends on that stakeholder's view and vantage point and what's of most interest, if it's something Martha has said, that it may align to budget, it may really oftentimes actually align to very different things. So it's less impactful to budget, potentially more impactful to policy setting and development. So you get a mixed bag is what I'm probably expressing to you from experience in the past, or even before Martha was here as manager, and the different kinds of strategies that we tried to apply. What we did get is just really very broad spectrum. They just want to give feedback to their special topic that is of interest to them at that time. And the difficulty I probably have with an ongoing one is the concern that it could be perceived as not responsive. That would be my concern. What I have learned and what some other budgeters have expressed is when you have these focus points or intervals that are predictable, where we're asking and soliciting, then sometimes it can, should be, more heightened and focused that people may engage better. We've just not had that good fortune, but typically, that's what that strategy is meant, to focus it in on a predictable time in which they know this is what we're interested in asking you and hearing from you. So that would be my only concern as an ongoing one, is that they are, it's called a budget input, and I would be interested to see how Towne Cary's handling that, but that it would come off as non-responsive because of the period of time that lapses of when they might see something materialize. That would be my only expressed concern there.
That's definitely something we can get more information on about how it's actually working. I don't have that information.
So can we go back to how we started this conversation about the definition of budget preview? So when your definition of budget preview is what you hand to us in April, and by then it is almost...
Almost done.
It's, so it's really not a budget preview. So it's, if you're, you know, if you're thinking about it in a different topic.
Call it something different.
Well, Jeannie and I are thinking of it as giving council the preview of what's coming, council seeing it differently. I think we all agree on that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that's good, that's helpful to, it's kind of baked by that.
It is. So let's talk a little bit about that, because that's really important. So there are other local governments that wham-bam, six weeks, their budget's done. Boom, 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 boom. They do not engage with their departments the way we do here.
Right.
We build from a department level up. You have every level of this organization representing what the needs are, that they've heard from you, that they've heard from citizens, that they've heard from us, that they've, you know, the things that they want to work on. Many other local governments say, okay, here was the budget last year, up 3%, down 10%, and that's how their budget gets developed. The manager never talks to the departments. They wait to find out what they got at the end. So our budget process is much longer and involved and integrated with throughout the organization than many other local governments. So just the amount of time that is spent in the budget process, especially for us in our departments.
Well, I've always said that, you know, your staff is always listening to you tonight, listening intently to your conversation with the CTP. It has implications to the future of what things might be coming forward in the budget. So listening to how you respond, what you found was most important, those kind of nuggets carry forward throughout this entire process that our staff is pulling back to those conversations that we have internally, and it feeds in to the bigger picture. That is so vital to understanding what your interests are, and that just goes from all year round.
So my question is, like Martha, you said you're continuously taking inputs from the council throughout the year, and when you're giving the budget preview, you're already solidified from your end, but just kind of giving like a cursor to the final budget. How do we know which ideas were picked up? Because we would not know till it is, the budget is in hand, right?
Well, that is with that preview, that's our checkpoint, that you're seeing those things that you've mentioned or talked about are being represented. That's been what's in the preview.
Okay.
So it's baked, it's not done. It's cooking.
Yeah.
It's well, it's well on its way.
You like it or not, that's the only cookie there.
I ground it.
You know, and...
You have a touch point, is what the manager said.
And I think we have to be, you know, just sort of honest with each other. You validate every year that we have captured the things that you have said. Again, recognizing not everything can go into a budget, and we're making tough choices. Again, we're trying to insert for you the bigger picture conversation that is gonna influence us more and more. We've reached that level that we don't have all the capacity that we used to to funnel things in. It doesn't exist anymore, and we have significant ongoing recurring needs that we're gonna have to grapple with.
So I was going back through our schedule from last year, and this was the winter retreat, and there was a topic, budget preview, end of January. So how do you guys see those two budget previews?
So this was at the front end. This is where, so if you recall, before the Saturday session, is that the Saturday session?
I think this is Sunday.
Okay. Friday, all the departments presented to you.
Okay.
So departments had already started working since December to forecast and start putting together what they thought might be their preliminary budget requests, so that we were seeing what those things that were coming were. And that's what we gave you in that first budget preview. Now, was it a list and a dollar amount? No. It's themes, it's trends, it's need. They talked about their needs, they talked about their challenges, they talked about their opportunities for their department.
And I like that a lot. I put that in my comments.
Yes.
I like that.
I think everybody liked that. The departments, I think, like being able to talk about their departments.
Well, it gives us the opportunity to ask questions directly to them, which we don't always get. So.
Yeah.
That was very helpful. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat, because I didn't weigh, I'm gonna repeat what Councilmember Fender said. I like the way we did it this year, too. So you back up, we start a retreat, having those kind of conversations, and then we have a couple of budget meetings going into April. And if you remember, we canceled our budget meetings in May and June, or I don't even remember the dates anymore. So we need to do them all upfront.
Move them earlier.
Yeah.
But I liked having the work sessions scheduled, if they were there, if we needed them, and then we came to find out we're good, we don't need them.
Yeah, it's easier.
Yeah. And I, it is, I think it's much easier for everybody to schedule and release than find the time. I think we've learned that early on in the process.
You know, I haven't been through the budget process as many times as the rest of the council members here, but I do, it does seem like, like the first year that Ann and I were on, it was after a reevaluation.
So it's 2023.
Yeah. Okay, so.
And that isn't, it won't affect our 2023, it will?
No, it's 2024 is when they do the evaluation. It affects 2025, is what Martha says. Their calendar year, we're fiscal year.
So my impression is, though, when there is that reevaluation, the budget process is a little, is, would be different and may require a few more work sessions.
It was very unique.
Well, we were...
Scenario S.
Oh, is that the?
Yes, and then was coconut.
Yeah.
We were like 26 versions of the...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna limit rolling that out.
Probably don't want to do all that again. But I would imagine, though, that a year after the reevaluation, it's gonna be a little different than like this coming year.
Well, again, that's really back to some taxing philosophy. As we went through this last year's budget, coming out of COVID, you know, there was a clear sense from council that tax rate increase was really not part of our discussions. I mean, Jeannie got, and I got, kind of got that signal. I mean, Jeannie got, and I got, kind of got that signal right at the front end. But we took it as outcome of what was happening in the community versus you having a very conscious, deliberate discussion about that.
When the three was baked.
Correct, with bonds, bonds, bonds was in there.
You had committed to that through your bottom referendum, yes.
And, and let's talk about some of the other things. You do have sort of on your schedule this year that are meaty. One is the CIP process, you are in a major refresh year. Now, that's not directly operational budget, but you are really setting your path for your future capital improvements and how we're going to pay for those. So that's, that's going to be lots of work in him, lots of work. We have to revisit solid waste based on, I guess, a general consensus we got from feedback from council that might want to talk about that now. And that really came out of the outcome of we were limited capacity in this year's budget. Stormwater Part Two is on our plate. And then again, if you want to have this, what is your general revenue philosophy? And we need to know when you want to have those conversations, because it's lots of preparation for us to give you the resources you need to have that conversation.
The biggest picture, you've mentioned needs a few times from departments. And then there's also the level of wants, which is more aspirational, and they might talk about that as opportunities in that initial budget preview. But if there's some way to have that carry forward and be options moving forward S number of, of budget possibilities, but that would be, I think, helpful to feel like we have a little bit more touch into the recommended budget as it comes forward. Because right now, you take all our input and you craft the preview, then you take a little bit more input and you craft the recommended budget. But is there a chance in there to have the needs, which are pretty much the new base budget, and then where we can choose to allocate some resource or help you determine where the best place for resources are? So you're vetting it before it comes through, but if there's some options. A number of years ago, there was a little bit of this, a little à la carte at the end. I'm looking for something that's a little bit more à la carte to make it bigger, because the, the S year was all about bringing it down.
So I hear you, Mayor, but council needs to decide it's going to be bigger for that to work.
Or to say no to those possible wants. So that, I'm just putting it out there now, because we're really early in this process. So as part of a meteor discussion, probably at the retreat.
Right, so, Councilmember Fender, what Mayor's referring to is we had about a million dollars four or five years ago that was unallocated near the end of the budget, and we had a list of 20 different potential opportunities with money associated with it. So it's like, do we do two big ones, do we do five little ones, that kind of thing? And that was actually kind of nice, because we were trying to determine what was the need at the time and also working as a council to have some flexibility. We also have those kind of exercises, usually after we close out our budget in the October timeframe. If there's any excess fund balance, we might have an opportunity to do an exercise like that. But, you know.
That's that mid-year budget allocation that Jeannie's talked about.
Fancy name that you gave that, yes. I call it the extra money.
And Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is correct, but that million dollars that was, I'll call it discretionary, just really doesn't exist for our core needs anymore.
Exactly.
That's, that's the crucial difference in what the mayor is talking about. It doesn't exist. We didn't meet all our operational needs in this year's budget. We didn't do a 300,000 additional paving. We didn't add staff that we do need. We kept in all of our allocations that you're saving for the future, but we shortchanged some of those other things that were recurring to balance what we did balance.
You're doing a lot more of putting money away for tomorrow, which is actually instrumental in having affected CIP. So don't get me wrong, the reserves are doing what's expected. I'm just telling you, over the years that I've been here, you're putting aside a significant amount of your, what I guess Martha and I would say discretionary money is actually now committed annual obligations that, that you want to maintain.
That, that we used to put, used to program in, that now you're setting aside for the future.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason, Martha, the reason we're doing that is because a commitment to the.
We are, we are fully supportive of that.
And, and that's last time, you know, it became like, because if I go budget by budget, people ask what's new in this budget, you know? I understand the sustaining issues, you know, like, you know, HVAC and all those things. But from our point of view, when people ask, I got to say, okay, yeah, this year we're doing this, this year we're doing this. That's the story that I have to spin to tell the people this is what we're getting, and that's the key important message. That's the reason, you know, where I see that value add of putting that money and allocating, like, Marshall Carpenter, 30%, we bumped it up, we were ready for it, you know?
Yep, I mean, and it's, it's, it, I think it contributes to our AAA ratings, that we have the commitment and discipline to do that.
And I think we'll need to do more in certain areas where costs are escalating as it relates specifically to fire apparatus. So we're studying that very thoroughly now, because the amount of money we're putting aside long-term actually might not be adequate, and we need to probably right the ship. But that's a future conversation. So I want to circle the table up on budget preview, and I think what you've touched on is actually number C, which is how do we discuss and when do we start discussing priorities? That's that scenario philosophy that, that you have given me some good examples of what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, and I'll just add, just to throw into the conversation, and, and it's sort of related to some of the other questions we've asked you. A great place for you to do that is your retreat.
Yes.
Is, is you've got time, you've got time together. Throw all those things out that you want to talk about. That, that's knowledge and information for us. Then we figure out how to bring them back to determine if it's one council person wants it, two or seven, and, and, and where it is in a priority order. If you want to start that process, we can still have a collateral, it's not the right word, but, you know.
Collateral.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Process with the departments are still going to have to tell us what they need and what they want.
And if you're wanting to hear from them and continue that as a part of your process, that's, that's ice, that's icing on the cake right there. You're hearing their perspective, you're getting some insight, and you're combining that at the same time with what you hear from your constituents. And at some point, we will align together.
And other revenue philosophy conversation, because those things add up really quick.
Well, for, I think what I heard you say was, at the winter retreat, have more of an opportunity, the council members could have more of an opportunity of giving input to our suggestions.
Yeah, really a, a list of council priorities, just like our departments do. They have a form, I'm not asking you to fill out a form, but they have a form that they have to fill out that, that gives us a, a documented need and a justification and a cost estimate, whether it's recurring, whether it's a, a one-time.
We can do something with that.
You know, what happens if you don't get it, how do you meet this need? So, so that's how they're preparing their budget. What I'm just saying is so much of that is, we have something, we have to replace it. We, we have to pay things so that additional things are less and less and less. But knowing they're in a pot, so let's use an example from you, sustainability. It came out, all we're talking about is a different structure of, I want to prioritize sustainability initiatives. And then we at least know that we have to determine how council's going to talk about that and how it would get incorporated. That's just an example. There's many of those.
So that is one thing where I think I would want to see different is that at the winter retreat, it seemed like that we were allocated time for more of a brainstorming, or do we bring the list? Because I, I remember like this presentation, it was all very prescriptive. It was being, you know, this is, this is what we're doing.
Well.
And there wasn't an opportunity for.
We had hours of brainstorming scheduled for you, and it went away with the virtual.
Yeah.
The virtual really is not good for, so I kind of, and I miss that kind of conversation, too. Can we, so.
Can we build that into our, whatever, this year?
Well, that's actually one of our other questions is, is, is typically, I'll say, staff has brought forth the stuff we know you need to hear. This is again another reversal of the process. Tell us what you want at your agenda, at your retreat agenda, and we'll make that happen for you.
Okay.
Yeah, it was unanimous, pretty much from the information we received, that brainstorming, you having time at the table discussing amongst yourselves and less presentation was really important to you. So we heard that loud and clear, along with the staff department presentations.
And we did do that in your first retreat. It was less, it was, it was limited. And then, of course, that was three years ago now.
All right, so to, go ahead.
Go in on that a little bit. And during the retreat, we received the department presentations. And if there's at all possible to get some of those before the retreat that can help inform what we feel are our priorities, because it's hard to react to those right then and incorporate them into what we're wanting. So if we can hear from departments a little bit earlier, then actually have the retreat.
So that's really going to be difficult for departments.
I hear you, but you said that they're already starting in now, in September.
Didn't we get?
No, no. Departments, departments are, started those presentations based on a, a, an assessment of the current year. They're giving you a heads up on the current year in December for presentation in January, is what we did that. But I'll challenge you back. If you've got priorities, you don't need to see what the departments are also asking for. What are your priorities?
Well, I mean, it needs to be two-way, because you guys are.
Well, that's going to happen throughout the budget process. That's what's already happening through the budget process.
But you're asking for us to brainstorm and everything just as we're receiving the presentations.
But it's not about the presentations I'm asking you to brainstorm about. It's what you're looking for in a budget, period.
The department presentations are going to be more operational.
Well, there's some capital items, the fire apparatus equipment, you know, the radios is a good example. I mean, I'd like to know, are the radios needing to be upgraded this year? You know, before that presentation happens, yeah.
Because those are must haves. We never say no to that, so it's a good to know.
But it, but it makes the other stuff less, you know? So it's, it, it sets my, you know, kind of mindset as to what we could probably get for the next year.
I did hear that through some of the feedbacks, some commonality is making it clear for you what we have to do versus what might be flexible, and then the, how it affects other things if we didn't do it. So, so I did hear that loud and clear, that that's some part of the message or the information that we should need to move forward. The trade-offs was a good word, yes.
So while we're talking about this thing, when, what, when, and now I'm jumping around to another item. When are you envisioning this retreat happening? We've typically been doing it.
That's a question I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, we typically have been doing it in February, you know.
Just not to correct you, January or February, we've sort of had it, we, we checked. Equal, equal amounts. And again, there's trade-offs on what we can prepare for you. The less we have to prepare, the more you have time to talk. But there's a huge workload on if you want to stay in town and how much time and, and all of those types of things. That's actually one of the questions I've asked you, is when do you want to have it? Where do you want to have it? What do you want to do? You know, we, we had a tour, et cetera, scheduled before we went virtual because we were really looking at the town center. Don't know that that'll be valuable for a future year, but you could want to see that. But there's time to, you know, again, we have, we have working, we have five, I have seven working council members, but five that have constraints by an external employer. And, you know, we're here at work at eight o'clock. We could leave at eight o'clock on Friday, but that's not easy for council members. And then you're all tired and don't want to spend a full day Sunday. So we're, we're always trying, I'm not making fun, I'm just, this is what we try to balance. And then breaks and lunch and, and, and it, and putting content in there is what we've been trying to do. And we'll make your retreat whatever you want. There's still going to be content we have to schedule somewhere else.
I like the way you said external employer. You know, I can't survive on this.
The town manager page, I feel like we have really good feedback for the first part. Can we open up the floor on retreat and meetings and work sessions?
Sure, I, I, I will, I, I will just sort of, I, I think ping off of what Jeannie has said. If you envision your retreat as your discussion that helped guide staff, we can make that happen, and that's sort of a launching pad for all the other things.
I like that idea.
I would have liked to have heard from departments in advance of it, though, help.
In advance of retreat.
And then, and so our discussions are more meaningful, because we have from staff.
So that could impact the timing of retreat.
So we're at, yeah, we're at, so that, that would, I agree with Jeannie, that would move your retreat back, but then that gives you less time to react to anything we put together. That really compresses our preparation time for a budget, if it's in February. And remember, there's Valentine's Day, and there's Super Bowl, and there's all those other kinds of things in February.
I, Valentine's Day, who celebrates that? But I'm okay with.
I do agree, Super Bowl is bet, is more important.
Yeah, it's way better.
But I'm okay with hearing from the department on Friday and then Saturday having, this is a really weird acoustics.
In that center, it is very odd.
It's super hard.
It's very, it's weird, it's disconcerting.
I'm glad it's not just me and Martha.
Well, I'm okay hearing the department's Friday and then having more time on Saturday as open discussion.
And, and, and to be very honest, like, even if you're telling Friday, we get the book at least four or five days in advance.
Yes.
So you're reading that, it's not like coming just off the fly, you know?
I, I'm going to agree. I, I like that. I, I, I actually, it gives me the opportunity to really focus. If I had a presentation from them two weeks prior, and then we come back, I know that I would remember everything. I, I want to be focused. I want it all in a two and a half day period or whatever we decide on. And that, that gives me the focus, and I like that. And I agree, we get the material ahead of time, you can read it ahead.
Right, so what I'm hearing is there's a possibility of a compromise if we get a pre, paper preview in a notebook a week before, so that we can review it. And then when we hear the department presenting at the retreat, we might have some questions that we marked down that will be answered during the presentation, but there might be a, a few questions we don't have. I think that, that provides you information you need in time to kind of review and process. I need that processing time, too. And then also those that want to have in the moment, you know, as well. It's, it's a good mix.
And it's not as impactful to the timing of retreat at that point.
Exactly.
Me, earlier, the earlier in the process that we can get the information is better, but I know it's a challenge for staff, you know, just with all the workload going on until the end of the year. So I think the key is getting more visibility for us earlier on is helpful to have more time to have those priority discussions. I think that sometimes, you know, in two-day retreat, it's hard to get it all in, and then before you know it's.
Well, we, we'll just have to purposely limit other content to make the retreat. And us knowing that, just again, we will schedule differently.
I can get it all in.
Councilmember Garamella, did you have a comment? You're pointing to the time.
So, so.
No, no, we started at nine, eight forty-one.
So let's talk a little bit about that. It, it affects your decision about a retreat. for every one of eighteen department heads to travel outside of the town and put people in hotels and logistics and cost and public perception and having a retreat in town.
It was good Asheville.
I'm fine with staying in town.
Want to stay.
It's the balance of the commitment to being fully engaged in the space though. When you're local, it's, you're getting torn away. When you're away, you're really focused. I think there's a lot to be said for being in town.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be on-site. But, you know, asking and, and paying for candidly in the public perception about those costs. It's all, it's in the newspaper every year, what people spend for their town council retreats.
But I like the idea of on Friday, we can just have the staff review here and then go. I think in the past we have done that too.
We have, I was just going to say the same thing. We've, we've been here on Friday to hear all staff in person and then on Saturday we left and.
Friday evening after the train, I remember.
Oh, is that what?
It was not the evening. It was the afternoon and staff, department heads did not go.
No, they didn't go. But they gave the presentation, though. We came early.
But it was still, there was only a few.
It was, it was going to, where is it? Kannapolis.
Kannapolis. I, I really like the train ideas. As we kind of got our minds into the public transit and.
It was a, it was a good. Train doesn't go to Asheville.
So I actually, when I, I mean, I obviously go with the group if I'm in the minority, but I actually thought we should go away this year. I know, I like the idea of doing one year in and one year out. But, you know, the last couple of retreats have been really difficult during COVID and we missed those opportunities to go away and be really focused. And so I was hoping we could figure out a way to do that. And I'm not saying we have to go far. I remember one year we went to Greensboro.
Go to Great Springs, West Virginia, Beckley's only three hours.
We could go up to West.
So, so, so just to keep us moving, we'll solicit, is there general consensus you want to go away?
But the dates are important, Martha.
And, and let us, let us start winnowing down dates. Understand that the dates are important because that also triggers who we can go ask for what. I mean, we can't just say, oh, we want to come and not have dates in mind and how many hotel rooms we need and that. But we can, we can follow up with questions, specific questions to prompt you with that in the next couple of weeks. And, and we'll look at some dates and stuff. If there's general consensus of going away with a department head presentation here prior.
I think it's a good idea.
I think, I think that that at least gives us some things to work on.
That's a good compromise.
And then again, we can put together a template of a retreat and have you work together to fill in the topics that you want to talk about. I mean, we can prompt that. Is what topics do you want to talk about? And do that. So let's, you have everything you need at least right now to work on some more budget stuff?
I think I have enough for you and I to have a good conversation and start putting structures for that and what that could look like and, and how we work with council. So I'm, I'm happy with this discussion.
All right.
You all were able to create like an extra couple of hours of retreat time on the train. And then the other time when we were all on the bus. That was really fun.
Oh, great.
So that's an opportunity to really make that part of bonding.
As long as every council member.
Is able to attend.
And it comes on the bus or the train. Steve Ralph.
That helps.
What'd you say?
Was he not on the bus?
He wasn't on the bus.
He came from Charlotte.
That's why the date is important.
Oh, yeah.
Last word, I shouldn't, but the commitment has to be there. It's not to say, yes, I will. And at the 10th hour, say, oops, something's come up. That, that, and I'm not talking about emergencies, but the commitment doesn't last till the actual day, even if it's made at the front. So that's what you have to commit to each other for.
And can I just put in another plug? When we, when we explore these other ways in which we can get your information where we're not here till midnight, when we send things out to you, we really need that information because it's driving another process. As Michelle sort of indicated tonight, that information's going to lead into a presentation that you're going to hear next. It's going to be a really important conversation. So that same level of commitment really needs to go there. When we try these different strategies with you to mitigate the time commitment in the room here, but still be effective in the conversations here, those lead-in things that we're emailing you really become very important tools and strategies to deploy.
Oh, I was confused. I was thinking the commitment to come to the retreat.
Commitment to the retreat is equally as important. Be on the train.
I appreciate that. That's.
Good place.
I think you're trying really hard to help us be more efficient in our work here.
When we put these prompt discuss, questions in front of you, we know they can be overwhelming for you. Seven different individual people and coming together can be difficult. But trying these different strategies might help you facilitate and get to consensus or agreement and sharing and exchanging good information. It's just we need commitment with that, with those unique and unusual ways in which we can do that.
So, so I, I think that again, just some general conversation about work sessions would be helpful to us with how, and again, it relates to how long you want to stay on a Tuesday and how we use that Tuesday time. Really how we incorporate round tables and brainstorming back into some kind of regular is, is what is your appetite? And, and again, we gave you a whole bunch of scenarios, not to suggest three meetings a month. That, but, but, but some kind of sequencing has typically been helpful, something that's standard and set.
We gave you this.
And, and things we've really considered in the past. Yeah, that's what Jeannie's showing.
Does everybody have that?
I don't have that.
Jeannie, do you have a hard copy?
It's really detached from this.
Okay.
Or just Steve.
I'm okay with three meetings a month. I'm going, I'm going to be traveling more next year. So it is a concern for me because I try to schedule around our council meetings for sure. But I can't always guarantee that, that other weeks will be free.
Do we need to flex some of our rules then to give more slack, reduce only to, to?
No, I mean, the work sessions are optional. They're not counted against, you know, we have a policy. I'm just, I'm very transparent. It's now that COVID has been resolved, I will probably resume some travel throughout the year and I can't always predict when it will be. But I do strive to make sure that the second and fourth Tuesday, that I am present.
Yeah, same, you know, same with me. I mean, I'm traveling a lot more now and it's getting really hard. You know, I'm, I'm managing it, but I've got new management in place and they're just not as accommodating for when I have travel to home, to even attend some of the regular meetings. So I've had to push to try to, so I think this is going to be a challenge for me this year.
So that means just really your default is.
Meetings are going to be longer.
Much longer Tuesday meetings.
Yeah.
That is, I think that we're less productive when we have those long meetings because we get tired.
That's been a challenge and why we've tried to limit them. That's, that's correct.
I would rather have a work session as its own, a standalone meeting and it be two hours rather than tacking on an additional two hours and be here till eleven or midnight.
So the work sessions, we've tried to limit to three. And again, when I say that, we limit it to three. Council may not limit it to three.
Three hours?
What?
Hours.
Hours.
Oh, yeah, two to three hours.
If, if it's standalone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, and, and, and I, and it's, I will acknowledge the goal was to take out the, the late at night Tuesday work sessions. But it will dramatically affect our work if we have to wait for work sessions and they're not set to do that offloaded work. Not, not, not only staff's work, your work.
I think it's really important to establish work session dates early on and then we try our best to get them on our calendars as best we can, knowing that some things are out of our control. But I, I, I think the work sessions and the work we do there are invaluable. Those are usually those items that take a considerable amount of time, you know, from one to two hours. And, you know, when you tack that on at a council meeting, it is, I mean, I can see it on some of your faces. It is, and I do, and I can't see my own face. I don't have a mirror. So I'm sure that, I'm sure it's draining on me too. So I, I think we have to schedule work sessions. And we have canceled them in the past too, if, although it's been a long time since we canceled the work sessions.
And I, and I appreciate that, again, I, I think we've tried to, to be very cognizant of the work schedules for those that, again, have an external employer. But, and I hear they're, they're optional, but you want to be part of the conversation. And all of you want all of you to be part of the conversation. And what happens when somebody misses, we end up talking about it again.
Yeah. But what about, what about the hybrid model? Are we allowed to dial in remotely?
We can't.
We're not allowed to because of the.
We can't vote.
Oh, okay.
But we could still have it.
During work sessions anyway, sorry to interrupt.
No, but we're seeing the same thing. We could do, if someone's not able to be physically here, they could call in and we're not voting, so.
And we, we do have the remote rules, even for regular, the, the regular are limited to specific reasons to miss. And then the remote, again, work sessions, you could call in remote. And, and I, I don't know if we could just have them all be remote.
Oh, I would not. Yeah, for that at all.
And again, we've all already recognized that when it's not all one way or the other, there's also disadvantages to that.
A hybrid is very hard.
Yeah, it is. It's hard.
We've just come out of two and a half years.
No, we don't want to have all remote.
I do not want to commit to doing things virtually from here on out if we have to.
I agree.
I mean, just like this session right now.
You're at an hour right now in your conversation.
So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to echo what council member Bender said. I'm okay with doing one work session a month if need be. The only thing I ever ask, and I've said this in the past, we have, you know, once a quarter, we have three weeks between council meetings. And I know those would be ideal to put an extra work session in there. But I, that's when I try to schedule my really big vacations so that I don't miss anything. So that's the only thing I would ask. And I know that's not going to always be possible, so.
So the way we did, so, so just a couple more questions if I could, just because it helps staff start moving some stuff forward. So we, we've been sort of back and forth on two meetings in one week, which would be a Tuesday, Thursday, and that's hard. And then there's been times where it's, again, three weeks in a row is hard. Or a Thursday before a Tuesday is hard. Are there specific preferences or which ways, at least we could show you a model? And again, we could start with 12 and just like we've done before, pull out the ones that we don't want to consider.
So working a full day and then coming here and working till midnight gives me about five hours of sleep before the next day and I am pretty exhausted. If we looked at doing a fourth Tuesday and a fourth Thursday, I'll have more recovery time before the next meeting. So I would rather do two meetings in the same week than do one every week because it really is disruptive to my work schedule for that next day when I've only had a few hours of sleep. That's just me. Maybe somebody likes doing every week?
No.
I like the, having the, the work session the same week as a meeting. That way, if you're planning travel, right, you have.
Is that what you're also saying, council member? Two in the same week.
Two in the same week and then I have a free week for travel.
Yeah.
Because now that I'm going to be an empty, for me, it's different now. I'm going to be, we're going to be empty nesters next year. And so for me, it's better to get them in two weeks because otherwise it's like every week we're gone, right? So like we're starting to travel more and do things if I'm, so I know we're all.
Two in one week.
Yeah, two in one week's better.
That's my preference.
You've got to be here for a council meeting on Tuesday.
Might as well be here Thursday.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. That's the hope. I don't care, actually. I don't.
What did you say?
I pretty much, my, our first Tuesday wake man, and I was just talking, your second Thursday is the fire commission. So, and then second and fourth, and then this one pretty much, our schedules are packed.
So, so aside from council member Garamella.
I'm flexible.
Superstar.
Is there anyone else that has standing commitments on Tuesdays or Thursdays for other things that they're members of?
Do you?
Yes, I do. The fourth Thursday of every month. No, the third Thursday of every month, sorry.
All right. So that's another point, data point we need to collect from everybody so that we're avoiding your conflicts. But in general, it sounds like two in a week is at least a preferred. And, yeah, don't worry about the week yet. And I, I, I've, I've actually been through, it, it's a great break for staff as well in all Canada, that extra week. Every, it, it's like you get an extra month when you get an extra week.
Of no work meetings.
You know, for staff, it's a constant agenda cycle. I mean, we're here Tuesday and we're inputting items for the next agenda on Friday of this week and doing the review process. So that's what it is for staff. And, and we can, if we know what we're dealing with, we can juggle the submission cycles that relieve some of the burden on staff. The only one I can't speak for is over there.
He's always working.
All right. So that's more that we can ask for. And that'll actually help us get those round tables in. I'll tell you, I'm an advocate for council members putting their roundtable items in advance as well with a template that works for y'all much better. I think it'll help facilitate your conversation. Then you just have to decide if you're going to limit yourselves and how much time you want to spend. But putting those round tables back on those work sessions as it was intended. What else did we need to know?
I think I'm.
You got an answer about you're okay with the table? Partitions?
Don't. Get them out of there.
I like my space. I, I like, I like my space right now.
I don't like it.
I don't like it either.
Conservative until we're really clear of any kind of.
All right, we'll park that one. So we'll revisit that one.
Maybe you and I, Steve, we can just get rid of ours.
So can I make a comment? We'll get back to the conversation about the round table. You got, you have another one coming up in October. Are, are we going to do them every month or?
Because it adds new work. I'm a little concerned.
Yeah, I think we have to have a conversation.
And, and you can, again, that can drive, but that's where we said they would work the best. You don't have to have them every time. And again, if we're going to, if we're going to limit the work sessions and we've got content to give you, it's going to limit other stuff is what really happens there.
Staff has brought forth roundtable items too. It's a place to also do that. But if we're going to really treat the roundtable as it's intended, it should be five or 10 minutes for each one max, especially if we give stuff in advance. And I understand the workload issue.
So, so could we at least acknowledge what we've added to the work, you know, the roundtables in the past and what we finished? Because I feel like. Because I feel like the round table, we're just adding, adding, adding. And some truly is incorporated and brought in a briefing later on. But let's just acknowledge that because I, I just feel like we're just adding new work because we have the time. And, and I want to appreciate the fact that we've moved some things, we've held some things.
Measure your success in your conversations.
I want to acknowledge that.
So the, the, the last update we provided was, the last round table prior to the one we just had in September was February of 2022.
I, I know. It's been a while.
And we had, and we had an updated list prepared from that. We have to add the September ones. And, and a lot of the ones that got mentioned in the last one are on the list. There, there's, so there's a handful. We can get you, we'll get, we'll get it updated for September and get that out again to you to see, you know, who's working on what and, and all of those kinds of things.
Comes to mind that, you know, Steve was asking for a, a more culture in the park recs and culture kind of section. And now we have more events that are culture-based and we have international festivals. So it's like, I'd like to see that and just kind of.
Yeah, we did actually, we actually segregated the items to completed and in progress and still outstanding so that those things were very clear. But we'll, we'll get that updated just to continue this conversation.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, large municipal partitions. Well, we can hold on investing in renovations to the council chambers.
Oh, oh, no.
Well, that, that could, that would be, need to be a budget priority. It's not an insignificant amount of money. And then again, if you want to talk about the structure of your agendas, that could also be a topic of when you're brainstorming and discussing at retreat. It, it's just something that you talked about at your summer meeting. Quick check, I sent minutes out on Au, for August 20. I just was looking for a review of those before we attach them to agenda and they've made public. I've heard from one council member that they were fine. Just go back and verify.
You sent us two sets. Are they the same?
I do recall sending two sets.
I thought you sent twice.
I sent a summary of, the first thing right after was a summary of the stuff that was on the white papers.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then you got a draft set of minutes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I don't think I really read the minutes. Okay, thank you.
Resend them out?
I can.
No, I think.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people are comfortable with the detail, given the topics there. I think it's good, but I was looking for a verification so those can go on your October 11th agenda. I'm good.
I think we're good. So I've tracked the items we want to bump to potentially retreat that are like procedural policy.
We can, we can put together a summary of those enough to council.
I think that's a great idea. Mayor, I think the town manager and I are good if the rest of council is good.
Nothing for you to do here. Not sure where to look, so I'll just look straight ahead. We're going to adjourn in a moment. Thanks for watching this meeting of the most by town council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org or the council for additional contact information. I then obtain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from town president Verona, a second. Charlotte Johnson, all those in here, please say aye.
Aye.
And a both or none. That carries unanimously six zero. It is 9:52. We are adjourned. Anything that gets turned off.
Thank you all very much.
Don't rush out the door.
Do not threaten.